Okay, good evening. We are going to call the meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, May 11th, 2022. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. We have to appoint a Board Secretary, Acting Board Secretary. I have a resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Nancy Tagliaferro as Acting Board Secretary for the remainder of this meeting in accordance with NJSA 18A:16-1.1. Can I get a motion?
Second, or first?
Second.
Second.
A second, okay. Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or recusals? Okay, Mrs. Tagliaferro, you are our Acting Board Secretary. Proceed with the roll call. Ms. Arminio? Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bierman?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Mr. Chiarella?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Drudzinski?
Here.
Ms. Gerby?
Here.
Madam President, you have a forum. Thank you very much. We get our statement. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted, May 6, 2022, at all schools, on the district website at monroe.k12 nj.us, published in the Home News Tribune, published in the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the Municipality. Great, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members' Report. We have both of our student board members here. We'll start with Samara Jane, welcome.
Hi, thank you. So this month at Applegoth, May 2nd to May 6th was Teacher Appreciation Week. May 3rd and May 4th was a PTA-sponsored flower shop. May 18th was progress reports will be available to parents. And the 4th grade field trip to Ellis Island will be on May 20th. At Barclaybrook this month, they were excited to celebrate Take Your Child to Work Day on April 28th. They found it very wonderful to see the children of staff members interact so positively with their students and gain true appreciation of what their parents do for their school each day. At the high school, forms have been handed out for the seniors for their prom, senior brunch, as well as the senior picnic, and project grad. AP testing has been happening this week and last week, and has been happening pretty smoothly. And the Spanish Honor Society will be hosting a carnival for charity on May 20th at 5:00 p.m.
Great, thank you very much. And our other student board member, Siobhan Calatapoli?
At Brookside, the school's goal committee and SEL team has been working to support students throughout NJSLA testing. The teachers engage in activities to motivate and encourage their students to do their very best. For example, the entrances were lined from teacher and the outside sidewalk leading to Brookside. From the bus loop were decorated. Last week was National Teachers Appreciation Week, and they were really thankful for the amazing staff at Barclaybrook, and they were grateful for their PTA, parents, and students as they recognized and appreciated the staff last week. They're looking forward to their scheduled in-house field trip, their virtual field trip field day, and the kindergarten show that's coming in the next few weeks. At the high... At Brookside, the school's goal committee and SEL team have been working to support students throughout NJSLA testing. The teachers engaged in activities to motivate and encourage their students to do their very best. For example, the entrances were lined with motivational quotes from the teachers. At the middle school, they're in the process of finishing up their NJSLA testing. The MTMS band trip occurred back on May 6th. The African parent night will occur next week on May 18th. And the MTMS tag expo occurred on May 3rd and May 4th. At Woodland, Mr. Zarelli, the instrumental band teacher, and Ms. Luang, general music teacher, celebrated the music in her school month during the month of March. Students read music fact... Students read a fact for music from them on posters and create a musical mural on the wall. The Student Council from Woodland also sponsored Autism Awareness Month with spirit days by inviting staff and students to wear blue on Wednesdays and also making $1 donations. Students in Ms. Reinhold/Ms. Tryerney's class created a timeless magazine issue recognizing their mom or important female in their life that's influenced them most this year. And Ms. Zarelli's 4th grade class took a virtual field trip to Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC in celebration of the 100th anniversary of its national monument.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, our next item on the agenda are our presentations. This evening, we have two. The first one is the recognition of our Unified Basketball Team. Ms. Chanley?
So we're very excited this evening. We have lots of celebrations going on. But at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Dowling to please come forward, and he's going to recognize his staff. And then we're going to have the children come up and we're going to give him their certificates.
Thank you, Ms. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Gerby, and all the board members, Dr. Higgins, fellow administrators, and guests here tonight for your wonderful support of our Unified Program here at Monroe Township High School. Team New Jersey. Team New Jersey. We're very proud of our Monroe Unified Basketball Program. They will represent New Jersey in the 2022 Special Olympic U.S. Games down at Walt Disney World's Wide World of Sports. Want to give a big shout-out to our coaches, Coach Sandy Mascali, Coach John Grasso, and Coach Kathy Dillon. They are wonderful educators and coaches. And without further ado, Ms. Chanley, could you come up and hand these out to our student athletes? I'll kind of read a certificate and hand it to you. Maybe move this over a little bit. So as we call your name, come on up. Okay, in no specific order. Ladies and gentlemen, Noah Black. Ayon Bora. William Carey. John Harry. Emery Krachman. Mason Kucharsky. Justin Marcelo. Robert Zeiser. Jamie Santiago. And Ryan Singh.
I'd just like to say, on behalf of the Board of Education, I think I could speak for all of us. We wish you the very best of luck down in Orlando. Congratulations. And we know that you're going to be representing Monroe and the state of New Jersey as best as you can. And we are so proud of you, and we can't wait to have you come back here and tell us how you did. And we will all be rooting for you here in Monroe Township. So good luck, congratulations. Thank you to Mr. Dowling, Coach Dillon, and all of the coaches involved in our Unified Program. It truly is a remarkable program, and it is a testament of what we do here in Monroe Township for our students. So thank you to all of our athletes, and we wish you the best of luck. Our next presentation is our Teacher and Educational Services Professional of the Year Award Presentation. I just want to say, most of us here had the great opportunity to have...go to participate in the reception held before the meeting. Thank you especially to Mr. Maraldo and all of the staff that put that together. The students performed, again, amazing talent. It was a beautiful event. And it was to honor our staff members who are being recognized this year. And again, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your service here, congratulations. You are truly what makes our district remarkable. Our students are very lucky to have you in their lives and shaping their future, and we couldn't be more thankful for your service here. So with that said, Ms. Chanley, would you like to do the word presentation?
Absolutely. And all I can say is, Mrs. Gerby has said it best. It was a fabulous evening. Everybody got to chat and eat quality, fantastic food, quite filling and delicious. And a special shout-out to the students that really made it special for the decorations, as well as for the food. And a very, very warm comment of appreciation to all of our...to all of our teacher and support staff, and our non-certificated...certificated but our non-instructional. You do a fantastic job. And someone did remind me, and I want to say thank you, that this is Nurses Week. So just like we celebrated Staff Appreciation Week, which includes everyone, this week we do have a special shout-out to our nurses. And if I'm not mistaken, we have at least two nurses that are being represented here today. To celebrate them, we want to say a thank you to everybody. And at this time, with no further ado, we'll be happy to give you your plaque.
A blessing. Do you want any order? Okay, doesn't matter. So we'll start with A, because it's the first letter of the alphabet. So, at this time, we'd like to recognize Monroe Township School District Honors Stacy Fleischer, Teacher of the Year for Applegoth School. Monroe Township School District Honors Catherine Rosso as Teacher of the Year of Barclaybrook School. Monroe Township School District Honors Nancy Dempsey, Teacher of the Year for Brookside School. Monroe Township School District Honors Kathleen Dillon as Teacher of the Year for Monroe Township High School. Monroe Township School District Honors Wendy Roth as Teacher of the Year, Mill Lake School. Monroe Township School District Honors Sarah Bramberger as Teacher of the Year at Oak Tree School. Monroe Township School District Honors Emily Raifel, Educational Services Professional of the Year from Monroe Township Middle School. My apologies, I went out of order. So last but most certainly not least, Monroe Township School District Honors Nancy Triano as Teacher of the Year for Woodland School. Continuing our Educational Services Professional of the Year for Monroe Township School District, we honor Margarita Turkish from Applegoth School. She wasn't able to join us, I see. I see the principal in the back waving down, Ms. Graziano. Margaret Town...Margaret...Monroe Township School District Honors Margaret Delmonico as Educational Services Professional of the Year for Barclaybrook School. I wouldn't stop saying Monroe Township School District, but I have to be equal. Monroe Township School District Honors Kurti Vias as Educational Services Professional of the Year, Brookside School. Monroe Township School District Honors Maureen Drybeck as Educational Services Professional of the Year, Mill Lake School. Not here? But I'm going to say it anyway. Okay. Monroe Township School District Honors Leah Nicholas as Educational Services Professional of the Year, Monroe Township High School. Oh, she's not...oh, you are here! I did see you earlier. Monroe Township School District, last but not least, as one of our honorees, honors Paul Perschelli as Educational Services Professional of the Year, Woodland School. Nice round of applause again for all of our honorees. Thank you. Congratulations again. Let's have another round of applause for all of our Teachers of the Year. Okay, our next item on our agenda are our Committee Reports. We have a committee...I'd like to go first. Mr. Nikotinsky?
On May 4th, we held our Personnel Committee. We went over the vacancy list, exit survey, and we went over the non-renewals, non-affiliates, and we went over the new job description.
I can't hear you, can't hear?
Can you hear me now?
Maybe you should just wait for...
I'll wait. Okay, on May 4th, we had a Personnel Committee. We went over the vacancy list, exit survey, the non-renewals, non-affiliates. We went over the Director of Security residency job description, network specialist job description, system data specialist job description. And...that's it. Thank you. Any questions? Could refer to our Superintendent and Acting.
Ms. Arminio?
Hi, I noticed on some of our hires that there are transfer replacements and transfers in the Acting Superintendent's report. So could you just go over if it was discussed and how the transfers occur? And the transfer replacements? Are they...are they posted? Or are they just the prerogative of the superintendent?
So without, of course, speaking about any individual person? Absolutely. So the way it works often, and I can have Dr. Lehman speak on it as well, but what happens is, depending upon what the situation's going to be for next year, the elementary schools, and we may have mentioned this once, they get together as elementary schools, and they... I'm going to say the way they do it. They come up with stickies, and they go on a board, and they talk about sections. So they have how many kindergarten classes, how many first grade classes, second, third grade, fourth grade, and so forth. When a school goes down a section or two, we take that teacher and we possibly, when appropriate, place them. So perhaps they're in Woodland, and now they're no longer needed in Woodland. So to make sure that we keep them, as we should, and we make sure that we place them appropriately when possible, if they go to third grade to third grade, fourth to fourth, they then can get moved. So that is exactly what that is. If you have someone specific, you know, perhaps it might have to be...
No, no, I have no one specific. It's all about procedure.
Yes.
And at what point do we actually post positions?
Okay. So if it's a true...if it's...and I don't know if that's...I apologize if that's...that's me. I'm not sure. Not to give them any more honor. It's the bling. He was making a joke. The way it works is, when it's a new FTE, a new full-time equivalent that has been approved, which you would have seen, because you're the board, and it's budgeted for, then it gets posted. If we have positions where we're just moving people around, it wouldn't get posted. I will tell you, if someone does retire though, or resign, and we're moving someone else in there, we would transfer depending upon if it's an overage. If it's not an overage, and let's say, Mrs. Katie Smith works at Woodland. She would like to go to Mill Lake. Mill Lake has an opening because someone resigned or retired. So, well, we don't have to post Mrs. Jones. Mrs. Smith becomes Mrs. Jones, but then Mrs. Smith's job will get posted. So if there is an FTE that needs to be posted by law, it will absolutely be posted. It depends. Sometimes if we have an overage, we're able to help the program. So I'm going to use a program to familiarize. So at the middle school, we have ELAP and MAP, which is Language Advantage Program, Mathematics Advantage Program. It's basically basic skills. So what happens is, we started out with one per grade for 600 children. We eventually went to two per grade, three per grade. So if we have an overage, let's say in Woodland, of a 10-year teacher, that teacher then could possibly get transferred to the middle school depending upon their certification, and then be an additional teacher for the ELAP program and the MAP program.
Specifically in the past, and am I close enough?
Oh, yeah.
Because I have a carrying voice. I know there had been times when someone was a part-time employee and they were just given a transfer into a full-time. That doesn't occur anymore, right?
Absolutely not, because you...that would have to be...yeah, I can't speak before me, but during my...
No, no, that's why I'm concerned.
No. If you have a...if you have a...let's use a gym teacher, for example. So you have a physical education teacher that's part-time, and now we have a full-time position, we would have to post for another halftime or another .5 full-time equivalent, .5 FTE, and then the half and the half would become the whole, but that job would have to be posted.
And do they...we only post internally, or do we post externally?
No, that would be posted externally as well. Internally and externally.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have for Mr. Nikotinsky.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Nikotinsky? Any other committees that have a report? Ms. Fabiano?
On Tuesday, May 3rd, the Community Engagement and Communications Committee met. We discussed the meeting that we would be having with Senator Greenstein Friday, May 6th, in Trenton, which did occur with myself, Ms. Gerby, Ms. Bierman, Ms. Arminio, and Dr. Lehman. We had the opportunity to meet with Senator Greenstein and several members of the Department of Education. And I know Ms. Gerby will be providing more details on that meeting later. We talked about the idea of posting a performing arts calendar so that all members of the community can be aware of upcoming events in our schools. We also discussed a letter-writing campaign to legislators in which we noted that there's already a link on our district homepage with a sample letter for community members to fill out. And we discussed that at our next meeting, we will have...discuss the chain of command and the results of the communication survey.
Does anybody have any questions? We have another committee wishing to give a report. Ms. Belko?
Yes, the Curriculum Committee met on Wednesday, May 4th, at 6:00 p.m. and reviewed a few items. The first thing that we reviewed was the class of Advanced Web Design. And this is a paired class, usually. It's to help the students do web design. There is a requirement that they take...oh, I'll never get this right. The AP...the AP Science...
Computer Science.
Thank you. Sorry. It's...and so they get...they work on a project all year, and the... The course...I don't know what's going on. The course concludes with the students designing professional interactive website, and they can do...they can design a webpage. They can...they get to control the style and the layout, do some dynamics. They spend about six-week sections learning different things. They learn HTML, CSS, JavaScript, MSL...MSQL, and then design and implementation in real life. And that's a 10-week part of what they do when they're designing. Very interesting class. It is AP Computer...Consumer Science is what they have to pass. It is an honors-level class. It's a higher class. And what the teacher's been able to do is, with the students that are eligible to take this class, he's been able to help differentiate some of the education on the honors level for the students that maybe, you know, are going to go off and be web designers, or are these maybe students that, hey, this is what I might want to do, and they decide after they take this class, now I think I'm going to go in a different direction. So it's a very interesting...more details. Mrs. Gasko does it much better than I do. So you certainly can look at the Curriculum Committee meeting to see that. The second item that we received from Mrs. Gasko was an update about the textbooks for K through 5 math. And as we've done in the past, and as she has explained in the past at our Curriculum Committee meetings, she met...she actually went to all the elementary schools, and she met with all the teachers there because math in the elementary level is not just taught by a math teacher, right? So every teacher on the elementary level teaches a myriad of subjects. So she met with a certain amount of teachers. And those that wanted to meet, she met also with the special ed teachers. And they...she presented with them with several options for books, and they decided to choose the Envision Mathematics. with them with several options for books, and they decided to choose the Envision Mathematics Reveal from the Savas Company. Has a lot of new things in it, new language objectives that fit in with the new standards. They are able to build on their math literacy. They have, they have a workbook that they get to be able to take things with. There's a lot more online learning for the students to do, and also for the, for the parents to kind of learn the lesson at home before they assist the student in the helping, which was one of the things that we did talk a little bit at length at, at our Curriculum Committee meeting. So, this was, this will be starting in the fall. They'll be using this. Very similar to what they're using now, not a lot of different changes in the curriculum, but a lot of good new materials for the teachers to use to be able to really get math in line on the elementary level. And then we had Mr. Maraldo present on the summer programs, and he was pleased to announce that we will be fully staffed for our, we're re-upping our model that we used last summer for summer enrichment classes, and if needed, there will be the summer credit completion. If it's, if it is needed, they'll determine that as the, as the school year comes to a close. They also were very pleased to announce that this year, the enrichment program will be free of charge to those in the township that are going to do it. They're also going to partner with ESY and do these enrichments within the ESY program so that we can coordinate some of that together. And then he also was able to tell us that the fee-based music academies will be returning this summer, and more information and details on that will be forthcoming from him and the Music Department. The next thing that he brought to our attention was the percussion ensemble. So, it's the, it's a new percussion ensemble course that is performance-based elective, but it is an audition-based group. So, the students will need to audition for this particular group, such as they do for some of the other groups that we have, and they would be, then they would be able to take this class. It is an elective. They will learn foundational standards in percussion. They will, they'll follow the NJSLS Career Readiness, Life Literacies, and Key Skill Standards for the music profession, as well as they'll be able to incorporate beginners, advanced students, and middle learner students in this, as long as they meet the audition. I don't know the process about the audition. I don't know all of those details, but those, I'm sure, would be, would be taught. The traditional assessment categories, which is the thing that a lot of parents want to know when their student is taking a class, is that they would be assessed in sound quality, musicality, rhythmic accuracy, technical proficiency, ensemble performance, and career readiness. And this class prepares them to be able to pass all of those different assessment pieces, and I think any one of our music classes does that. And if a student does have a continued interest in percussion, but perhaps they don't make the cut for the audition for this class, there are many other percussion ensembles that they can join and different music opportunities for them in the, in the high school. So, that concludes my curriculum report for May 4th.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, Ms. Bora?
I did email about this after that, Ms. Bora, so I'm gonna bring it up in the meeting. Thank you. It was indeed a very good meeting, a lot of exciting things to discuss. After the meeting, I had some chance to think about the Advanced Web Design curriculum, and I want to bring up a concern regarding that. So, besides the Advanced Web Design curriculum, which was discussed in the meeting, Mrs. Gasko mentioned that there was also an app design class that's offered. So, there are four classes offered in our high school for students who are inclined to that career path. The prerequisites are AP Comp Science Principles, which the student can take in freshman year, then follow the path and take AP Comp Science A in sophomore year, and then they have the next two years, because they've met these two prerequisites, to take the web design class and then the app development class, right, Dr. Lehman? So, at this point, I think because we are limited in being able to offer all the freshmen that apply for AP Comp Science Principles, we are actually not making it possible for all of our students to take those two classes, which were discussed in the curriculum meeting. So, one of the, that was my concern, and my suggestion was that for students who are unable to take Comp Science Principles and Comp Science A and have outside-studied computer programming through various summer programs that are offered, if they can test into the web design class, which I think the prerequisite is JavaScript, which is taught in AP Comp Science A in our high schools, but if it's not offered to them because the class is full, we should make it available to them if they've learned those skills outside of school on their own, and if we can test into it. So, I don't know if that's ever a possibility, but that was my question about allowing more students to take these two really interesting classes.
So, that's definitely something that kind of cycles back, and it's not always Comp Science-related, not always Comp Science-related. Some, there are other sections, especially some of the courses that get closed out quickly. So, we have a, we, as we grow, and I mean, facilities-wise, that problem solves itself to a certain extent, because we have more space than if we just, it's as simple as our priority is to hire another Comp Sci teacher to pick up more sections. Eventually, you know, that can be addressed kind of moving forward. But in terms of looking at students skipping, basically going outside of the district, doing enrichment enhancement, and then coming in and skipping classes, it's a slippery slope in the sense that those outside opportunities allow for an advancement in something they maybe don't have access to. But on the tail end of that, and we often see this in a math sequence, if students, say, every summer, kind of take a class to catch up, they still need a certain amount of credits to complete, so you still need four years of math. We will run out of courses after Calc BC, you know, we eventually, if they start skipping classes, we run out, and then we have to create more classes on the tail end. So, it's a, Comp Sci's a little different than that, but it's definitely something that we, we are, with this summer program, we're going to look at an enrichment piece for potentially next year. It's 120-credit hour piece as opposed to a 60-hour recovery piece that we're looking at now, and we did last summer. When there's 120-hour piece, we can then broaden the amount of students that can recover credits that they may have lost last year, but we can also look at enrichment and almost providing like a math class or something to move forward. But we need to make sure on the tail end, we still can provide enough opportunities for them to get the credits that they're required to graduate. So.
And the Comp Sci's work towards math credit, is that right? Am I understanding that right? Is that what your concern is?
No, no, well, the Comp Sci's a little different piece. I'm just relating, we have this conversation a lot with math, like, can I go and take, you know, a calc class over the summer and then get into the next-level calc or something like that? But they're all related, you know? So, if we, if we do that, then they're gonna get to a point in junior year that, what course are they gonna take potentially? We would need to come up with something for the senior year for them to take, because they've exhausted our catalog already. So, it's kind of a balance that we have to work through. The Comp Sci piece is a little different, and that may be kind of areas that we can consider, you know, if you run out of a computer science elective, there's other electives to take, right?
Yeah.
But we see that, and we've had a lot of questions previously in the math realm specifically. So, that's, that's kind of where we, we have one hand in it and one hand out of it, and, you know, it's something we're certainly looking.
I do understand the challenge. So, ideally, it would be if we could just offer it to more students right off the bat, and that would solve our problem, but also, so many times, the children don't even know in freshman year if they want to do this. But that is an ideal solution, if we can just offer it to enough children right from the beginning so that they don't.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously the best long-term solution, and long-term meaning when we have more space, and that could be a few years from now, or that could be even longer than that. We don't know. But, you know, in the interim, we can look at classes for enrichment, and that's something separate. But again, we have to be careful that we don't run out of requirements that are required.
Yes.
We don't run out of our course catalog in terms of what we have them offered.
Thank you.
Yep.
And just to piggyback on that, one of the concerns too is that you almost have to know that you want to take that course in the middle school, because you have to be in advanced math. You have to be, you can't be on the grade-level math at freshman year to be able to take the Comp Sci, the AP Comp Sci. You have to have, I think Algebra I is already prerequisite. Freshman year is Algebra I, so you've had, had to have already taken that in the middle school to even be able to take that computer science course as a freshman. So, it's, you almost have to know in the middle school that that's the path you want to go on, and I think it does limit the amount of students, like you said, to being able to take that, because then you have to catch up your math before you can even take the next course.
Yeah, and so, and that's, it's an AP course, so there are certain thresholds, right? The other solution is having opportunities for students who aren't necessarily on the AP Comp Sci track, but just another level of computer science courses. But again, it comes down to, right now, a spacing kind of issue that we, you know, we're bumping into. So.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, Ms. Fabiano?
I have the policy report also. So, since Michelle wasn't there, I led the meeting as vice chair. We have a long list of policies that I won't go through individually, but they are all in the agenda for our first reading tonight. But most notably, we discussed the updated HIB policy, which Ms. McConnell, who is the district anti-bullying coordinator, provided an update on. And that is the policy report in a nutshell. I don't know if we want to talk about the updates to the HIB policy, or, no, that's it then.
Does anybody have any questions on policy? No? Okay. Any other reports? Mrs. Bierman?
Finance Committee met on May 4th. Monthly review of the attorney fees. We reviewed the March 2022 invoice. Total there was $28,130, of which $22,110 were categorized as Oprah-related. We reviewed the bill list for the period of April 8th through April 29th, $10,869,145. Again, expressed concerns about bills being paid between board meetings. Committee members continue to work with the board attorney and superintendent to revise bill-paying procedures. Bill list is Item B of Board Action tonight. Ms. Jeanne Corallo from Falcon Care ECE program led a discussion concerning scope of the Falcon Care programs and visions for future initiatives. There is no Board Action requested at this time. The committee appreciated Ms. Corallo's passion for her position and excitement for the future potential of the programs. Some takeaways included the program's perusal, pursuing, pursuance of licensing, opportunities to offer summer programs with an eye toward complementing the Township Recreation Department offerings, and utilization of our in-house advertising initiatives. All board members were furnished via email with the material shared during the committee meeting. Ms. Cindy Schaller attended the meeting to speak to the renewal of the Mets contract. This is Item G of Board Action in the BA recommendations. Cost of the contract is $74,984 with a guarantee financial return of $90,000. The committee does recommend this renewal. Item H of Board Action is our recommendation to approve a modest increase to the school lunch prices to reflect challenges with inflation and rising costs. Our prices are still highly favorable to surrounding districts. Though the board always hesitates to increase costs to our families, it is the committee's recommendation to approve these price increases. Elementary would go to $240, middle school to $245, high school to $250. I believe it's a 25 cent increase, either 10 or 15, that was already bundled in there from last year, but never really implemented because of the free program, and then the balance being added on for this next year. Committee reviewed contracts for renewal. I think one of them's new Item D for the renewal of the School G software with Power School. That's $31,477. Item F, which is our participation in coordinated transportation between the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey and Monroe Township. Item E, which is the Transportation Services Agreement with Warren County Special Services District. Item A, which is Monmouth Ocean Education Services Commission for Instructional Special Education and Transportation AIDS. Item C, Frontline Education, which is the applicant-tracking software, $4,785. And Item K, which Mr. Feldman presented to us remotely, is $18,032 for email protection and cloud archiving. Mr. Feldman explained that this is a significant cost savings to utilize these services instead of continuously having to purchase and support an in-house server. So, the committee does recommend all those contracts for renewal. There are other contracts that will present on the agenda that were not part of the committee review. The last item was building use fees. Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman provided information concerning our current and proposed building use fees. I strongly encourage viewing of the committee meeting for the full conversation. There is not currently Board Action, but we will be presented with a full updating of our prices as the changes work their way through Policy, Finance, and BG&amp;T Committees for support. At core, our existing pricing is potentially doubling or tripling, given it was established many years ago at an exacting cost of the building use. At that time, with no eye toward being a revenue source, our new pricing structure will align us competitively with surrounding districts. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Mr. Rutzke?
So, question with regards to the Oprah requests and the legal aspect of that, because that's obviously a disproportionate amount of the legal bill. So, while I know there's often a lot of Oprah requests, is there any thoughts about how to satisfy those without going through the lawyers? Or without, like, I guess I'm trying to figure out, that's a big number. Again, disproportionate to the overall bill. So, how do we address that? How do we tame that?
Mrs. Chanley, do you want to speak to that?
Is there any way?
Well.
Besides Nadia having Oprah requests?
In the abundance that we have them. It, what we did, we started to have conversations about having someone who maybe can get more extensive training, and perhaps it would be appropriate to have a position in the central office that would also pick up some other areas. It was a conversation that we did have in Personnel. For example, one of the things that Mr. Teig and I spoke of when we met together was a particular area in the building use. Building use was under a different secretary's position that was never replaced. That position was just, became defunct. So, salary-wise, it was originally in the budget. They did not replace that position. Another individual was taking it over. When we had a retirement, Mr. Teig then hired his secretary, and his particular secretary, in addition to her responsibilities, picked up that responsibility. So, we started to look, to be smart, that if we were going to utilize, we wouldn't just hire an Oprah secretary, although I have to say many districts do have them. I've actually gone online to look. Perhaps maybe a secretary that could then pick up the building use, especially with the increase and influx of the utilization of the buildings. Perhaps that area, as well as the area of Manning the front, for lack of a better term, people now stop what they're doing, as they should, to answer the door and answer the phones, and then in addition it would be Oprah. We then started to have conversations that we would reach out to NJPSA to see if perhaps, because we do work with one of the attorneys there, Mr. David Nash, to see if there's more extensive training. I think one of the reasons that we've had more utilization of the attorney is because we want to make sure we're transparent. We want to make sure that there's no denial, that there should not be. We want to make sure we're doing everything legally right to protect the Board of Education and protect the school district. And what has happened is, the plethora and the overabundance of that, what there's been, is, has led, and I take, I think Mrs. Zelensky's done a great job, but it's led her to err more on the side of caution by going to the attorney. So, if we had someone perhaps that can get even more extensive training. I mean, it would be wonderful if there was someone out there that perhaps was retired paralegal, just for example, that wanted an additional job, but these are the kind of things, we did discuss this in Personnel.
So, it's your confidential secretary?
Currently.
Currently, that is doing the Oprah request, and she's had training?
Yes, but not the, I mean, you're right. You know, we all have training, but there is a difference between training and an extensive training.
Right.
And it has become to a point where she's not able to do her first responsibility of her job due to the extensive amount of time, even though she does it above and beyond.
Okay. All right, I'm, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bora?
I just want to continue on that same question. At the New Jersey School Board Association Spring Symposium, there was one presentation that I attended that was for document management best practices, and the presenter mentioned an application called DocuWare, which they, and I'm not sure if you're already using something similar. I meant to discuss this with Mrs. Chanley at a later time, but I'm bringing it up because what stood out to me was that they mentioned that this, the software is able to read that emails, so essentially do a little bit of the lawyer's work for us automatically.
DocuWare?
And help with Oprah requests. So, the software is set up to help with Oprah.
Is that one word, DocuWare?
DocuWare, and I have the contact information, and I will email all of that to you.
I'll be happy to look into it.
It definitely was in my to-do list to reach out to you and share that. And thank you for reminding me, Mr. Rutzke.
Yes, Ms. Rettner?
So, first of all, just to piggyback on Mrs. Bora, I also know, having done a little bit of research, and I'd also gone to that, not at the time it was offered, but later on, I know that there- I know that there are websites where members of the public can request Oprah documents. And then there, I believe that they're publicized on that website with the redactions that are required on there. And, you know, I think sometimes there might be a lot of members of the public looking for repeated information that if we were to sort of push them in that direction, they may be able to see what they're looking for. And that might be something to save time. I don't know if that's something that has been looked into or not. And I was also just curious to see if there's a way, and I'm sure this is all documented, because I know, you know, the business office, and, you know, I know Mrs. Zelensky are excellent with record-keeping, what the amount of Oprahs have been, let's say, over the last? I was, I was going to say over like the last three years, and then what the legal fees were regarding Oprahs for the last, let's say, three years. I want to, you know, go back before COVID if possible, because obviously COVID is very unique. And just to see if there's, you know, something that is standing out. So, that's, you know, regarding Oprah. And then also, I did get a chance to watch the finance meeting, and I have to agree with you. I forget her last name, I think it's Jeanne, who's in charge of Falcon, Corallo. She really just seems so passionate about what she's doing, and I love the fact that she mentioned that she was going to go to various street fairs and publicize, and that sounds absolutely wonderful. And so, I looked at our rep programs that we offer in town. And I know that there is, you know, Mount Tepa, and there are other weekly programs that may target younger students, but our rep program doesn't actually start until first grade. And so, I think there's really that opening there for students who might be younger than that. Obviously, not this year, I mean, maybe, but I wouldn't assume it's pretty late on. But going forward to really target, you know, that kindergarten, or going into kindergarten age level, and try and get something going there. And then also, I just wanted to clarify with the lunch costs, because actually, I think it was Mrs. Kirby who had mentioned that the double increase, because there was going to initially be the increase this year, and then there's an additional increase for next year. Is that what's happening? Because the prices that you had mentioned weren't what was listed on the agenda. And I wasn't sure if those were inaccurate, or if we had, if it had been revised based on what you had mentioned. Because I do kind of agree with you. Obviously, 25 cents is not a lot of money, but over the course of 180 days, you know, for certain families, it can add up. So, I was just curious.
Sure. So, we had a meeting with the business administrator, myself, and Dr. Lehman, and this was going back maybe about six weeks ago. So, actually, to be accurate, over the past two years prior to this year, it would have been a 10 cents increase, which did not occur because every lunch was free. So, if you take that 10 cents, and we are increasing it 15 cents for the 2022, 2023 school year, it is a total of quarter.
Right, so the numbers I gave, you're right. The 240 is the current price for elementary, it's going to 255. It was just that we never charged the 240. Right, so you're at 255 for elementary, 260 for middle, 265 for the high school. Coming into next year.
Okay, sounds good. And then just the last thing regarding the food programs. Was there any, was there ever any discussion? And I know that this is something that we're mandated to have, because we don't have, I believe it's either 50% or 70% on free or reduced lunch, but to have any breakfast programs available? Or has that really never been brought up? I know, you know, in a lot of the lower income, or lower middle-income school districts, they offer that, whether it's free lunch for the, or free breakfast for those who are eligible, or even, you know, for high school students who want to come in and eat. And I figure it might be a way to bring in additional revenue. But I also realize it requires additional man-hours and things of that nature, so, this is something I thought of.
So, what I will let you know is I will look into it. It is definitely my understanding that it is not a requirement. I will confirm that I am correct.
Right.
In case I am an error. If I am an error, I will correct it with Ms. Corallo, excuse me, with Ms. Schaller, and I'll speak with her. It is my understanding that during the free, it's not free, during the time that the federal government, wasn't free, we still pay through our taxes, but during the time that the federal government provided that, we were providing when we were on remote, we were providing breakfast. That is correct. But it is my understanding that we're not required, but if it's something that would be advantageous to the district, I could definitely have that conversation with Ms. Schaller.
Okay, yes, I mean, from what I've read for the national health program, certain states mandate it, certain don't. With New Jersey, it's not mandated unless there's a certain percentage that's on free and reduced, which I wouldn't think we are. But I also figure you're, we're still eligible for it, so I figure it might be worth looking into.
I'll be happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, I know this is on the agenda for a vote, but since Ms. Bierman mentioned it, once again, it might be a little confusing on the contract renewal for Food Service Management Company. The $74,984 is our fee for the program. And I, and it says guarantees of financial return, but we are not necessarily getting actual funds as a return. Is that correct? Because last year, okay, last year, we had this conversation. And for years, I've been thinking we're getting $90,000 guaranteed into our coffers. But last year, I think it was clarified, and maybe the year before with the previous auditor, he did say that it's just like an accounting issue. And I always thought that we were getting $90,000, which sounds great. Can we clarify that? Can we get that clarified maybe for, I mean, we probably have to vote on this tonight, but it really is sort of difficult to conceive that, that we're getting $90,000, when we really aren't. So, can you answer that?
I can't answer it, no, we'd have to get back to it on that.
I, I wouldn't be able to speak on any matters from last year. It was my understanding during the presentation, because I was here, that the cost would then be compensated to the fact that they did use the number 90,000.
But it's not a matter just of last year, it's a matter of this year now.
So, what I can do is, all I can do is ask.
Because they're repeating the same program, and they're repeating the same consideration of 90,000. And I think that it is not exactly a fundraising.
It's an accounting line item.
Yes.
Right, so there's really no 90,000 coming back to us?
No.
Okay, I want to, I, the public needs to.
It would probably be 26, 16,000.
I believe there is, there is revenue into that, because we do.
I can read Mrs. Allen's, because I questioned this, so, in an email, would you mind if I read her response to it? In response to your question regarding Mets, the return would include all food service revenue sources, meals, federal and state reimbursements à la carte, and special functions reduced by food service cost. We are making a profit as we have in the past years. Because I'd asked, is that?
My understanding, my understanding was like, say that those monies didn't equal 90,000, then you'd get a check.
Yes, it's a minimum of 90,000.
Right, so, but the program far exceeds that 90,000.
Yeah, I'd like to see what, what, the net, because this is a contract we have with them. And we're talking, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. I would like to be clear as to what the $90,000 actually means, and if there is a net value to us. And I know we bring money in from, from this, but we can't, we can't use it. It's earmarked for sort of this, in the contract.
Cafeteria fund.
Right, but I'd still like to understand, because, you know, we need to know what that money really means.
Michelle, we've been asking for years to understand the cafeteria fund. I agree with you 100%, so.
So, maybe if we can get a breakdown.
What I'll do is I'll get you a breakdown to see what's the actual cost, what they compensate for us, what actual monies, like.
Yeah.
You know, I.
What does $90,000 mean, really?
Does $90,000 mean minus 74,000 that we're paying them, and that's what we get?
Right.
I know exactly what you mean.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'll be happy to take care of that, and what I could do is I could report back to Ms. Bierman, so it could be reported at the finance.
You can do that, but you can also, yeah, it should be discussed in finance, so the public can see it. But you can get that information to us sooner.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Anybody have any further questions? That's all of our committees, correct? Oh, no, BG&amp;T, sorry, Mr. Chiarella, I'm sorry.
Finance committee notes. Figured we'd go around two times, and then I could go. We had a fight, BG&amp;T, so I almost did it too. BG&amp;T committee meeting on May 3rd at 8 o'clock. And we discussed seven different topics, so these are a little in-depth, so I'm going to go through that. I also want to explain, I've seen, again, distortions and lies on social media that I have to address here in my committee report, so that people get it straight. I doubt they even watch these videos to get the right answer. So, we're going to have to start answering them online when we see lies and distortions, but here we go. So, we had an update on the Barclaybrook Art Classroom conversion to special education room with the toilet room. The administration provided updated overview of the project and shared project design drawings. The mechanical drawings and electrical designs will be completed and will be ready within a month. The project is slated for construction as a capital improvement in the summer of 2022. And our district facility will handle a portion of the construction to maintain the cost and the quality control, which they do very well. We're also, they will also seek the input of the principals, director of pupil personnel services, to ensure that it's up to what their needs are, so that they're getting what they think they need in order to run their program. The next thing that we reviewed was the update, stopgap interior classroom expansion projects at existing graphic arts classroom at the Monroe Township High School. And again, the administration provided updated overview of the project, shared design drawings. The mechanical and electrical drawings are still being completed. And as with the other project, our, our facilities team will help with that project to defray costs and make sure quality control is where we need it to be. And Dr. Kevin Higgins has been actively engaged in the design. The next, the next thing that we discussed was the update to the multisensory room and self-contained classrooms at the Monroe Township Middle School. And I know it's sounding like I'm repeating myself here, but we were provided the project, the project design drawings, the mechanical and the electrical designs are being worked on, and they should be ready within the month. This project is also slated for summer of 2022. And again, our district facility, or is it Mr. Teig? Our district facility staff will handle the construction, or some of the construction, and to maintain the cost and quality control, so. And again, our administrators are actively engaged in ensuring that this is what they need, and they're looking at designs, and they're, they're giving a lot of input. Monroe Common, the next thing was the Monroe Commons lease status update. So, our administration has been working with the new owners, with legal counsel and the new owners, in order to secure a lease so that we can continue to use the building. Right now, we have had zero interruptions, so our pupil personnel services are still operating out of there. We're just trying to cement everything so that, so that we could have that done. It'll be presented at this meeting in our agenda, if you've seen our huge, our huge agenda. And we'll take, we will be taking action on that. So, the next thing, and this is the one that I really want to spend some time explaining, is that we reviewed our high school scope for the referendum. And DI Group Architecture provided an overview of the existing high school layout, the previous additions, the interior renovations that have been considered. The committee, following the directive of the board, asked the architect to revisit the possibility of expanding upon Plan Six classroom addition in the rear culinary arts area, realizing the scope of the middle school project had a reduced classroom count following review of finalized demographic report. So, I want to explain what happened, because what I'm reading is, the board said, oh, we don't have as big a scope anymore, so let's take that money and waste it, and send it to the high school and build stuff there that we really don't need, instead of giving the money back to the taxpayers, when the taxpayers haven't paid anything yet, because the referendum hasn't even passed. So, we're still in that process. What really happened was, we got the demographic report, we started going through and looking at it, and my friend, Ms. Bora, contacted me after our BG&amp;T committee meeting and said, from the, from the looks of the demographic report, we have less of a need at the middle school, but the need now appears to be at the high school. So, what do you think about us, you know, maybe switching that focus and taking a look at that? And I said, I think that that's a good idea, let me, let me bring that forward, which I did, to the, to administration. And we decided to discuss it again, take a look at it. Her recommendation made a lot of sense when we looked at it. In light of the new demographic report, we still have a need to house our students, so this isn't just like, hey, we're going to put a swimming pool in now, because we don't need the things at the middle school. This is, we still have a need for on-house students, but now some of them are here, and we need to make sure that we're addressing those student needs. And so, that's what we're doing in order to balance that out, so that we're properly satisfying our, our, our need for room for our on-house students. And that's where, this, that's where the changes came from, and that's how we're, what we're doing to move forward. And so, we're, we, as a committee, liked option one. So, option one had more classrooms and more ability to, to sort, to house more of our on-house students. So, we, we looked at option one, and we thought that that's what we would like to see, as opposed to the other two options, which didn't give us that same level of classroom that we think, we think that we need. Because we're, as everyone in the committee had stated, and Ms. Bora, Bora had said to me on the phone a number of times, as we talked, that we have to, you know, as, the more students that we're serving is really the way we need to go. You know, we, we need to look at how we're going to house as many students as possible with what we, what we think we're going to be able to pass with the public. And that's how that happened. So, I don't know if you wanted to speak for that at all, because I think you were very, you were very eloquent, and you, you know, I, and I give you a lot of credit for, you know, bringing that forward and having that foresight and, you know, the imagination, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I can ask, but I would say that we are fortunate that with everything and with us running against the clock, Mrs. Chanley, the DIG group, Mr. Teig, a lot of credit to him, worked at it again, and, you know, changed the scope and presented something that does align more with the demographic's report. We are, we're not, and in the way Mrs. Chanley explained it, we are not taking away too much from middle school. We are addressing more of the high school needs while still addressing the middle school needs. The number of on-house students in high school has increased steadily year over year, and now the need is more here. And our original plan that was proposed in February addressed fewer students in high school and more students in middle school, and now there is more of a balance. The plans proposed are beautiful, it was very exciting to see them. Thank you, Mr. Teig, for working with DI Group on that. I'm not sure if they, have they been posted on the website for, will they be posted sometime soon for the public to see?
Yes, so, Mr. Teig, myself, and Dr. Lehman have been having conversations, because we were very excited. But as he said, it was almost like a workshop model. So, when he came to the committee, it was like hands-on, and we all looked at it. We want to make sure that as they get further and further into the scope, that everything is defined. Because as you well know, if you make an error and say 18 classrooms instead of 17 classrooms, it becomes a negative instead, instead of a positive. So, we want to be very careful in how we present it. So, timeframe-wise, Mr. Teig and I were just talking about, we would think within the next scope of our next board meeting, that we'd be able to, he's shaking his head, yes, we'd be able to have something. You know, the extra three or four weeks allows DIG group to get down to the specificity of what's done and make it, make it more accurate. We want to make sure that whatever we share is accurate. We are very excited, though, that we have almost tripled the amount of classrooms that we're able to do at the high school. And I would do want to thank you, Ms. Bora, because when you brought it to Mr. Chiarella, and you brought it to me, we were very excited, because, you know, we're all about the whole school district. It's not about the middle school, and elementary school, high school, it's about everybody. And what we can get for all is what we want to do.
And I want to emphasize two things here, that with the current plan, we are addressing Apple Garden, we are addressing middle school, we are addressing high school a little bit more than we were before. But we are also addressing the special needs students situation in Mill Lake with whatever, with all the other plans, they will be able to move back here to Oak Tree. And the other thing that I want to emphasize that Ken did allude to is that one of our criteria, as we were making this ask for the high school, was to not change the budget limitations on this referendum. The town has spoken loud and clear, they will not pass an expensive referendum. We need to address as much as we can in a fiscally responsible way. So, our ask was to shift the focus without shifting the numbers on that plan too much. And, and that's part of the reason we're excited, because it does seem to be in the same cost range, and we are getting a lot more addressed in the high school, which is a need. So, those are the two things that I did want to emphasize, and I hope the plans will be finalized and the, the public will be able to see. The last thing that I do want to say is that, because we did allow for the referendum services to begin, even though we are changing the scope of the originally proposed plan now, we are not losing any time so far in the work, and we are still on track for April, April referendum. And for that, I am very thankful to the committee, thank you.
I told you she could articulate that better than I could. Thank you.
Forgive me for asking this question, I probably shouldn't know the answer. Did we actually vote on a different plan as a board? No, we haven't really voted on any of the plans, right? So, now we're going to the first option?
Yes.
By committee? When will the board, so by the time it comes to the board, will it be too late? I mean, the board will have.
It's on the agenda.
Tonight?
Yes.
Yes, but, but we didn't really see it as a full board, we didn't see it as a presentation.
I could just explain it if you want, because it's not.
Well, no, I, I think the.
I would like to share that with you. So, is what you, what you will be looking at will be no different, will be no different. with the exception of the removal of classrooms from the middle school. Because if you would just recall, the way it was structured was the front of the building is what they're going to pull out. So the front of the building, just for argument's sake, would be the right side and the left side. Now we'd only do, if you're facing the building, you'd only be doing the left side, the right side would then be removed, so it would not be increased.
Yes, thank you for that, but I, I still think I, I would have preferred that the, the public should have seen somewhat of a presentation tonight to just say this is, because it's a change. And even though it's recommended, I think the public should have seen it, the difference.
We don't have, we don't have an item on the agenda to vote on for that.
I didn't think so, but I could have, because so many things changed between six o'clock this morning and tonight. We do or we don't?
We do not.
Okay, so could we have a small presentation when that item comes on to the agenda the next time?
Absolutely, and I think that's what we had, we had spoken about when the plans were all finalized, it would come to the full board, absolutely.
We don't have to waste any more time, but that's what I was concerned about.
And I think your concern was that, would, would we be delaying, you know, when that-
No, no, I just think the public should know exactly what we're going to be voting on.
Right, so we're not voting on the pivot, but when they're done, then they have details, then we're going to have to vote on it. The pre-referendum services has already been voted on.
I understand that part. But the change to the option should be exposed to, actually, I wasn't able to see the meeting, and it should be exposed to the public as well.
Yeah, that, that was discussed.
That's all I'm asking.
I, I would like to just say, though, that our, our committee meetings are public, and they are televised, they're on video, people, anybody could log in anytime and review those. So I, but I just want to, for the edification of the public, I don't want them to think that they're blind to what's going on. They could log in and look at these meetings.
But again, I always have to point out that this is the public forum, this is where the public gets to actually make comments and see. So this is where any real changes should, should occur as well.
And, and that will happen.
Thank you.
But you're still in executive content for all of the plans at this point, or no?
The three plans.
Those are executive content, they're not shared with the public yet.
That's fine.
Okay, come on. Ms. Ratsky?
So just for clarification purposes, I, I kind of get in the feeling you don't want to be too specific because of the point that Ms. Shanley made. But, so we were going to do six classrooms in the high school. Now we're expanding that to be something-
Thirteen. Thirteen general ed, two small group instruction rooms, and- What's that?
Mr. Take, could I just ask you to step up this way? And I apologize, I just want to make sure he-
Seventeen general ed classrooms, two group instruction rooms, as well as relocating the fitness room.
He just got it, that's it.
To the brother building. Option one, though, go ahead, go, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Take.
Okay. Yes, and further to what was discussed earlier, the board passed a resolution to do additions or renovations at Applegarth School, Middle School, and the high school. The preliminary concept has not changed for Applegarth School.
Right.
At the middle school, based on preliminary demographic information, we looked at two phases. When the final demographic report came in, we realized we do not need to move to Phase Two. Taking a step back, we've talked about long-range facilities plan, which is what guides the district on these projects, the long-range facilities plan is guided by the demographic study. So the demographic study projects out five years, which is what the long-range facilities plan allows. When the final demographic study was done, which is inputted into the LRFP, it indicated that we did not have the full need at this time for on-house students. The board's directive all along has been to build for on-house students only and stick with the state model. So that allowed us to remove Phase Two at the middle school, which was a total of about seventeen gen ed classrooms, some small SGI's and toilet rooms. Substantial reduction in the scope there. Ms. Bora and the committee inquired as to whether or not that could then be applied to the high school. What was originally applied, designed for the high school was six classrooms, as we mentioned, backed by the culinary arts. Those six classrooms do not take care of the full on-house student population here at the high school, so we had an opportunity to expand upon that. What the BGNT committee looked at were two options. One was thirteen classrooms, the six previous plus seven more, and the other was seventeen gen ed classrooms. And the committee thought that they would like to go for the seventeen. That would be an addition of eleven gen ed classrooms here and some SGI's with a reduction of seventeen across the street, so the finances seem to balance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? Mrs. Ratner?
Yes, so first of all, thank you, Mrs. Bora, Mr. Chiarella, and administration, because that was definitely one of my major concerns, you know, as you had known with the referendum. So I do appreciate you guys following through on that. I just had a couple of quick questions. I did have the opportunity to watch the BGNT meeting as well, and I also, you know, wanted to say kudos regarding the energy audit. I think that's definitely something that I hope we look into. I remember that there was a discussion, I believe it was in BGNT, it may have been and find something about, but between police versus security for various athletic events and things of that nature. And I think, Mrs. Shanley, you had mentioned you were going to have a discussion, okay. I don't know if that's something that can be elaborated upon, but I was just curious because if I recall, most of our security guards are retired police officers, so I was wondering if there was any.
On behalf of the twelve, so it was asked of me to go back and to confirm, I spoke with Ms. Bierman actually, to confirm, and I had a conversation with the director of security, and he explained specifically that nothing has changed. The cost seemed like such a large increase because of the two years of not having a lot of the games, but I can give you specific answers, I have to off the top of my head because I didn't bring my notes. So it is understanding that under varsity football games, we have always had police. Under varsity lacrosse games, we always have police. And under, I'm, I'm just doing it off the top of my head, junior varsity football, we also have police. So I thought I was going to bring it back to Ms. Bierman at the committee meeting, so I don't have it in front of me, but I would say that if I had to guess, I'm probably ninety-five percent remembering it correctly. So I did confirm that there is no difference in the amount of police that we have, which would then equal the cost, to exactly what we had done pre-COVID.
Okay, where money's spent on wrestling and basketball.
Oh, I apologize, thank you, thank you, wrestling, wrestling, wrestling. Wrestling is a big one, actually. I, I did question wrestling, thank you, say I said ninety-five percent, she caught the five percent. So that's correct, wrestling. But girls, no, we don't have the police for the girls. And one of the things that he did share with me is that there is a relationship that exists that he has with the other director of security, that when they know there might possibly be a concern, I'm just speaking the truth about the girls thing, it just happens to be what it is, I'm sorry, that's just a fact, that when we know, and we've had some situations in the past with some particular rival schools, for lack of a better word, I'm just saying the way it was, that we do wind up having a police for that for crowd control. And thank you, you are absolutely correct, I did forget the wrestling, wrestling and basketball boys.
Okay, and then just two other quick questions. I had gone and watched prior meetings, actually to look into a different topic, which is something on the bill list, which I can talk about later. But when I was watching it, one of the things that had been discussed in a prior referendum was the concern of bringing Applegarth up to code. And I just wanted to confirm if that is currently there, if that's something that's being addressed with the, you know, potential, you know, referendum? And also if there, because I know this was a discussion previously, if there's a contingency plan, if we find that there is a significant issue when we start doing things?
I think, there's a couple of things. One, if we do, if we do a certain amount of work on Applegarth School, that will then trigger us to have to do upgrades to the facility. But if we're, if we're working outside of that, or we're working on the, then we don't, we're not, we don't have to then do all the ADA compliance and all the changes that are required by the law. But we have to reach that, that threshold. The other question was what?
Oh, if we find that there are more issues with Applegarth than previously seen, is there a contingency plan going forward? Hopefully there won't be, and we don't have to worry about it, but obviously you always want to prepare for the worst, hope for the best, so I was just curious if that's something that was discussed at all?
Maybe Mr. Take can answer that, but I, but I know that our, you know, our contingency, we, we've had a specimen, asbestos abatement, you know, at, at Applegarth. We're aware of the, the boiler and, and, you know, the, the various issues with the roofing and things like that. So I think we pretty much, we, we, we pretty much know all of the, you know, that building inside and out.
Yes, Mr. Chiarella's description is spot on. There's a threshold that has to be passed. The referendum that is planned for Applegarth passes that threshold, so the rehab code kicks in. So the addition will obviously be up to current code, and the renovation of the existing building will bring that area up to current code as well.
Okay.
As far as costs for contingency, the Department of Education requires in the cost summary estimate that there is a line item in there for contingency on a project. It's mandatory that districts keep a contingency on the project. If something comes up, that is what it's used for, for change orders. At the end of the project, if we don't run into any roadblocks, that then gets returned to the taxpayers as tax relief.
All right, thank you.
By contingency, though, were you talking about a Plan B, or are you talking about a?
I just wanted to, honestly, anything. I was just curious because, you know, sorry, I didn't know what that was. Just because, you know, I just know, having done something previous, recently on my house, you know, you budget for $5,000 and then all of a sudden it costs $10,000, you know, and my house is only 20 years old. So I was just wondering what the, you know, potential plans would be, that's all.
And so Mr. Take's saying it's not about plans as much as it is about money, so the state has a threshold that we have to keep certain money, and then whatever comes up, now you'll draw it down.
Right. Makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our next item, which is the public forum. We value the public involvement in our school district, and we want to hear what you all have to say. Thank you for coming out this evening. Just a reminder that we should all maintain a tone of respect and civility. Courteous behavior is extremely important to remain proper decorum and foster a safe environment for all involved. Please only speak when you have the floor, this will help us keep order and move the meeting along. Anyone wishing to speak at public forum, please come forth, state your name and address for the record, and you will have four minutes to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, Betty Sabarito, to Barrymore Drive. I just wanted to address two items that are on the agenda. The first is congratulations to the Unified Basketball Team, especially to Mrs. Dillon, who has started this program, built it, and made it quite successful. Again, she's retiring, she's a big loss for our school district, and we wish her the best on behalf of the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. And the other item that I saw is that Mr. Pepe, one of our principals, is retiring, so on behalf of CPAC, and also as a parent with a child in his building for the past two years, I've met continuously with him to address some of the special education challenges that we've had, and he's worked diligently with us, so we wish him the best of luck. That's it.
Thank you.
Brian Fabiano, nineteen Patricia Place. Regarding Oprah, I would check with Vito from the last board meeting, he said there was no uptick in meeting, in Oprah requests, so I'm not quite sure how they're saying there is. Regarding the HIP policy, there was a lot of talk about the HIP policy in the policy meeting, and I think what's ironic is members of the board here that are sitting on the board to make decisions regarding HIBs are some of the biggest offenders. I come to this microphone today with extreme sadness in our community. As many of you know, Monroe is a very diverse community, and the diversity is the cornerstone of what makes our community who we are. The Monroe community is filled with friendships, relationships that are rooted with love, camaraderie, honesty, compassion overwhelmingly without, are rooted with love, camaraderie, honesty, compassion overwhelmingly without prejudice to sex, creed, religion, or race. Diversity drives creativity and innovation produces higher rates of productivity and performance in the community and fuels all of our personal growth. Every one of us is different, no one being better than the next, and no one has the right to define someone else's personal beliefs, origin, thoughts, or character, especially the members of this Board of Education who take an oath to represent the welfare of the children in the school district. This past weekend, it was disgusting to see on social media, members of this board, Adi Nikotinsky, Chrissy Skirby, Ken Chiarella, and Karen Bierman cite the work of a hate group to promote racist and Islamophobic tropes in an attack on a parent who has been critical of their policies. A parent whose children attend the schools never to be subject, a parent of children who attend these schools should never be subjected to racist attacks on their families or communities. Board members posted links to a hate group described by Georgetown University as a right-wing anti-Islam think tank that spreads misinformation and creates watch lists targeting academics and advocates hawkish foreign policy. By smearing America's largest civil rights group as an anti-Semitic and front up for terrorists, board members try to incite hatred and violence against the Muslim community and fracture the bonds that exist between Muslim and Jewish people in Monroe. While some of the board members use the phrase "speaking as a citizen" in their attacks, your hateful words and racism and attacks on a family and community are not cloaked in what you perceive as an alter ego. As board members, you are held to a higher standard in our community, and you are supposed to be role models for our children, but your actions are instilling fear and hatred in children and the community. Your choices this past weekend were careless, harmful, uncompassionate, and downright awful. When members of this board were sworn to their position, you took an oath of Code of Ethics. You agreed that you would make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and would seek to defend, to, you would seek to develop and maintain schools that meet the individual needs of, of children regardless of their age, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Hurting children by attacking their families is not making decisions that are in the best welfare of the children, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. I am calling on this board to denounce this behavior, this racism, this hatred in our community, and immediately issue a public apology to the family you attacked and to the entire Islamic community that you labeled in your hateful attack. Thank you.
To respond to that, there was no family that was identified or attacked. What was put out there was a fact and information that was, that came to light of board members that actually showed why there has been a widespread personal vindictive attack on one of our administrators. And that is disgusting, what has been happening. We did not attack a family, but information that came to us was put out there. Nobody attacked the Islamic community, nobody attacked Muslims. What we have is a person in the community that has a obvious deep hatred for our, one of our administrators, and that is based on religion, which is disgusting. I agree with you. Good evening.
My name is Yehuda Spritzer, I live at Fort Kelly Court. I want to thank the acting superintendent, as well as the board, for taking up an important issue, which was brought up to me by Jewish members of our community, and that is with the second day of Rosh Hashanah being allowed to be taken off as a vacation day for school with the schools being closed. As you know, in the past little while, many stories of antisemitism have come to the surface, including this past weekend, two or three stories, some of them quite, all of them quite shocking. As a matter of fact, the ADL put out a report that in last year alone, there were over twenty-seven-hundred anti-Semitic incidents that were reported, out of which violent crimes against Jews rose one hundred and sixty-seven percent last year. This is something which is unbelievable, somebody who was born and raised in this country, somebody who appreciates and loves what this country has to offer, the freedoms it has to offer to everyone regardless of race, religion, gender, and creed, is something which is very important. I want to thank the board for, for bringing this up and rectifying the situation, allowing Jewish children who live in this community to be proud of who they are, standing up to antisemitism, continuing the work that you do with Holocaust, Holocaust education, and all the other important work that this board does. I thank the acting superintendent, I thank the board, I wish you lots of luck in continuing what you do and your success, what it may have, which is a success for all of us here in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, Sarah Aziz, three Launcelat Drive. I also think it was good that the board corrected the calendar to add the second day for Rosh Hashanah. I was surprised that it was excluded in the earlier version of the Canada, uh, calendar, so I'm glad that that was rectified. I have some concerns about item R on the personnel agenda, which relate to the non-affiliate staff. Specifically, I noticed that the director of security position is missing and will not be renewed. This means that our current director of security, Pete Piro, will not be secured a job as of July first. Mr. Piro is a dedicated and intelligent district employee. He's also a retired Monroe police officer and has all the skills and training that come with that. He has improved our security forces with his ideas and training, and has made Monroe safer for its students and staff. I'm concerned about the impact this will have on our school's security. Since the majority of this board got elected, we lost a great in-house attorney, a very qualified superintendent and business administrator. In fact, the board has had a finance committee meeting last week with no accountants present at the meeting. Monroe has the second lowest tax rate in Middlesex County, partly because it has some of the most smartest and qualified accounting professionals that work in its business office, but unfortunately, their opinion does not seem to be valued by this board. The unjust suspension of our business administrator last month may result in a lawsuit. There have already been allegations of Oprah violations that may also result in lawsuits. At the last board meeting, it, it was apparent that some parents had hired an attorney to help them to address their concerns with the schools. Our legal fees are already significantly higher than last year and we are already paying attorneys $200 an hour with more lawsuits expected. I call on the board once again to make a fiscally responsible decision and hire an in-house attorney, given that our legal needs seem to far exceed those of other districts.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Michael Lesky, yeah, 50 Mayberry Avenue here in Monroe Township. And just here to ask three important questions, but before I rattle them off, I just want to assure everybody here and folks in the audience, I'm not here to torpedo anyone's plan for a good referendum here. Yeah, I've lived here for over 30 years now and I know how important it is. I've watched the numbers. Yeah, I know how important it is to get a referendum passed and the sooner the better, but a good referendum. So here are my three questions. I'll read them off and just want to ask for at least some comment. I guess number one, do you have a rough estimate of what the reduction in cost would have been? Yeah, or not, I shouldn't say would have been, yeah, maybe would have been, with regard to the middle school expansion. Just trying to get some idea of how much money we were talking about moving from the middle school to the high school. Number two, and this is very important, and all of you should be asking this question. Where on paper right now is the design basis for these three projects? We know we have that updated demographic report. Someone must have sat down and made some calculations and I would hope written them down with regard to what is it that we need to solve our overcrowding problem with those three projects? And the last question I'm going to ask is kind of scary. Yeah, I'm not sure, did I hear it tonight or did I read it somewhere else? But the impression I get now is, but the original referendum that we've been working on, apparently, let's see, I'm not going to use the word intended, but apparently was not, what, large enough in scope at the high school to solve the overcrowding problem at the high school? Yeah, but now you're fixing that problem? Yeah, that's good. But boy, that's not a good, good basis to move, uh, move on, on the high school. So make a long story short, just thinking right now, you folks I know have kind of sworn to transparency and you owe us a lot more information in the public right now on what went on. I know it's got to be done quick to meet the referendum deadline date, but we need to know in more detail what's gone on and most important of all, what is the design basis for those three projects? Yeah, incorporating all that latest demographic information. So I appreciate some comments, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Chanley, would you like to comment?
Mr. Take, could I ask you to comment if you would? Thank you.
So to the question regarding value from middle school to high school, in very rough terms, we took away 17 classrooms at the middle school, added 11 classrooms here. So you're looking about two-thirds of the cost was transferred from one to the other. As far as where we are in the process, we are actively engaged with the architects on a regular basis. Administration is working closely with the architects. Dr. Lehman, the principals at the schools, our Transportation Director on Design. The Edspec is also being developed, so it's following the normal process. The only revision is what we highlighted earlier, that due to the ability to lower the capacity at the middle school, we transferred that over here. Can't give you exact dollars, but if you just do simple math and say, deleted 17 classrooms, added 11 classrooms, you save six somewhere in between. As we've discussed at the BGNT Committee, though, we all need to be mindful that with the current economy and the recession, costs are rising. So although we may be, a reduction in scope of six classrooms overall, going from 17 to 11, we do have to be aware that costs are rising and that some of that cost could be offset. The process involves that once we get further along in the schematic design process, the board engage an independent estimator and the estimator will apply cost to that and those costs will be applied to the DOE submission. The architect had originally talked in a range of about $105 million in total for all costs and that $105 million does not take into account money that would be awarded from the state. So that will be offset. So when we know the exact number, when we know what will be submitted to the Department of Education, that will be communicated out to the community.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug Boy. Excuse me. My name is Doug Boy and I live at Fort Tamarack Road. I have several questions and I have some comments. So I'll go through the questions, pause, and I hope that my time will be paused accordingly.
If you could just state all your questions, we'll answer them when you're done.
Okay. And that some items on committee agendas pertain to issues in which only nine members can vote. Does having five members on a committee constitute a quorum when discussing non-high school, non-district issues? That's the first question. Comment regarding the school calendar for next year. Some closings are identified as being for religious reasons. Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali. Yet there is no equivalent recognition for Christmas, Passover and Easter. I believe in inclusion and I was happy to see that you were beginning to make mention of those religious holidays because I think it promotes discussion among students. Well, what is Diwali all about? What is Yom Kippur all about? But in the spirit of that inclusion, I believe that all religious holidays should receive equal recognition on the school calendar. There is a resolution to approve the law offices of David Rubin to handle two School Ethics Commission matters. Is the public entitled to know who on our board is involved in these matters? In looking at the bill list, the information is confusing. Some items have a check mark, which I understand means that the check was issued, such as on the dates of April 4th and the 8th, but not entirely for April 8th. And then again, on April 25th and 26th, but not entirely for April 26th. There are no check marks for items dated April 11th and April 27th. Why do some items get checked and others don't? Why are their dates totally skipped? What is the criteria being used to which bills are being paid? I do want to commend the board, well, the committee, I should say, the committee for coming up with what seems to be a good plan for dealing with our unhoused students. You've talked about it a lot tonight and it was talked about during the committee meeting and it made a lot of sense to me. However, you need to be aware that the referendum may not pass. And if it doesn't, I hope that you do some pre-planning in terms of what will you do if it doesn't pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boy. Would you like to speak of some of the matters?
Yes, I can address the question as to a quorum. Fascinating question. However, the determination of a quorum is based upon the full membership of the board. The full membership of this board is 10. That would make six a quorum. For example, in a special meeting, if an issue came about that Mr. Rutske could not vote on, the quorum would, to run the meeting would still be six. It's based upon the full membership of the board without regard to the specific issues that are being handled.
Did you want to answer the question about the calendar?
I'd be happy to speak on the calendar. Just so you are aware, I did notice, and I would agree with Mr. Boy if I may, that in the last couple of years prior to me sitting here as Acting Superintendent, we no longer, we no longer identified the holidays. So when I had an opportunity to work with Dr. Lehman on the calendar, it was also very important to me that all holidays are delineated. The fact that we do not list Passover and we do not have Christmas, Hanukkah or Easter really was just an oversight because it happens to fall within our spring break and winter break. If we had not been on winter break or spring break, then we would have delineated Passover, Easter and Christmas. I agree with you and I would be happy to make that revision because it was something that I noticed as a principal. Why all of a sudden, beginning the last couple of years when I was a principal, where did these holidays go? Because I'm completely in agreement with you. So thank you for bringing that up.
And in regards to the ethics complaints, do you want to?
Yes, the ethics complaints, while they're in the investigatory stage, are confidential, under law.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Elizabeth Hans, 712 Sussex Way, Rossmore, Monroe Township. I'd actually like to, I'm sorry, I'm sort of new to this, so I do not know everybody. But the question that was raised about Applegarth, and I'm going to obviously defer to the engineers and the architects who know much more than me. But I know a little bit. I spent part of my career being a commercial real estate lender and so I'm well aware of the fact that ADA is pretty much triggered by, I hate to say it, sometimes we used to just say, oh my gosh, I moved the doorknob and now I have to comply with ADA. But I am concerned at the Applegarth. You asked a question about what's a contingency and I know in terms of planning contingencies, what percentage of money do I have to, you know, catch any overflows? My concern is more like what if when you open up, because I used to watch this old house, what happens when you open up the walls and you find out that you actually can't even do the renovations? I don't think the dollar amount contingency is what you need to be thinking about. I think you need to have a Plan B. And so that was just my concern. I think you will run into the ADA triggers. I'm not the lawyer and I'm not the engineer and the architect, but I think you will be running into ADA triggers because generally ADA requires that if there's any kind of renovation, 20% of your costs must be spent on removing barriers from the path of travel. In an old school like Applegarth, that would be a lot of path of travel because path of travel could be just trying to get to the water fountain. So I just want the board to be aware of the fact that you've explored that particular issue because that school is old. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close our public forum. The next item on our agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. Good evening. I just want to start by saying congratulations to all the staff that was recognized tonight. It was one of our, I think collectively favorite evenings of the school year. It's always exciting to see the accomplishments and recognize our, all of our staff is outstanding, but this is an opportunity to get more personal with our yearly recognition. So congratulations and we had a very nice time. Some news we received earlier this week. We were notified that we have 18 high school choral program students that were accepted to the New Jersey, New Jersey Music Educators Association All-State Ensembles. Seven students, seven of them will perform in the All-State Mixed Chorus. 11 students will perform with the All-State Treble Chorus. The students additioned alongside hundreds of other choral singers across New Jersey to be accepted to these prestigious choirs. Rehearsals begin in June. They continue throughout the school year next year and they have two performances, one in November and then one in February 2023. So congratulations to those students. We have, relative to other schools, a very high turnout. That's, that's a lot of students to be selected to these, these choirs, so congratulations. And it's just a testament to the tremendous programs we have at the high school here. So again, congratulations. Just a quick update on testing. We're continuing to test NJSLA and AP testing. NJSLA is district-wide testing, creates basically three through the high school. AP testing is in the high school. It's ongoing. Some schools are finishing, some schools are starting. All the, all the schools push out kind of testing schedules based on when they have technology. It's going well, but we are looking forward to moving past it and then getting on with the end of the school year activities, the culminating events, all the fun spring activities we have going on. We just received some invitations to the National Honor Society events coming up. We have our concerts that we spoke about. We'll put that calendar out, so the community is welcome to attend those events. We have our field days coming up, Unified Field Days coming up. Proms, of course, they're, you know, coming fast. So we're, it's, it's an exciting time of the year. This is a very busy, fast, but exciting time of the year for us in the school district. So that concludes my report and we're just looking forward to wrapping up the school year and getting on with our summer work.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Next on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Skirby. If I may first start off with a very, very positive, exciting, exciting report that I would like to include. Ms. Kathy Dillon has shared with me, the Special Olympics New Jersey SONJ is presenting the first ever district banner to Monroe Township School District in recognition of their unified programming throughout the school community. This banner celebrates the excellence of student participation and engagement and honors coaches, advisors, teachers, administrators, parents and families who exemplify inclusive practices and what it means to be unified. Along those same lines, I think it's very important, if I could just take a few moments, to bring out the positive occurrence that have happened in the last six months or so. And that could not have happened without the support of the board and us working as a team. So as you have heard, we are definitely going to be transparent and provide documentation that shows the presentation of what's going to be the referendum. We're trying to be, we're trying to be fiscally responsible and get for as many schools, all that we can, for the whole district within a budget that we feel is at least palatable to the community. Additionally, we have been very, very fast and furious of working directly with CPAG. We work with them on a monthly basis. We're very excited about the unification of our children, about this concept, what of inclusive inclusivity truly means. Mr. Maraldo should definitely get a shout out because he is one person that has worked laboriously in a positive way to work with the elective teachers at the high school level. We started to look at programming at the electives for the middle school to see what it means for all children to have access, equal access. Just like when we talk about Talented and Gifted and we talked about different programming that's going on with dual enrollment. We also have to talk about our special needs population and what we can do to make sure that they have the same flavor. It's a good word for tonight because we had such a wonderful recognition reception. Flavor is a good word because it was delicious. So that all being said, we also are looking at what we can do within our own buildings. We have or will have approximately 24, 25 self-contained classrooms within the district. And what that means is that because we are doing something right and we want to continue to make it better in our district, we're looking at what those classrooms look like and how we are renovating the existing rooms in the existing buildings to make it more advantageous for children. Upon my first month or two here, we started talking about, and I will talk specifically in this case about the middle school, about utilizing an old room that was taken apart when we separated the foods room and then we made it a culinary arts room and the other one was a resource room. Well, now we're taking it back and we're doing renovations so that we have an area for the children to just chill out, to decompress. So perhaps if there's a problem with one of our self-contained children, they, we do not need to call security. We do not need to have them removed. Rather, we have an area with a rocking chair or a beanbag in which they can go into that spot. And I want to thank Mr. Take as well, as he's been working with the middle school principals to make sure that that is created to the best of their ability. Something else that the board has supported is our multisensory room. Couple of years ago, when I was a principal, it was something that was brought up and at the time it was not able to be approved. Now the board has approved it, once again, the support of the board. So now we're going to have this multisensory room. I just had the principals reach out to me because they know I want to be kept in the know because it's going to be a room that's going to have cushioned benches. It's going to have mirrors. We want to talk about improvement of self-esteem. A lot of the speech pathologists, when they work with these children, because I used to see this in my own building, we teach children, look at yourself. You are the most important person that you can see, so the whole thing will be mirrored. There will be some sort of a swing in there. So I know that we also have this at other schools, something that I really wanted in the middle school. That is moving forward. Another renovation that's being done, once again, in-house to save tax dollars, is what's going on in Barclaybrook. Renovating an old art room, putting in a sink, making sure we have the appropriate toileting rooms so that we can have it for special needs. So I thought it was appropriate that we bring the focus where it belongs, about children. And I wanted to start off my Superintendent's Report by saying how important it is that we have a supportive board that has voted yes to so many of these resolutions and allowed us to move forward with the recommendations that are really and truly helping the entire school district. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board. Thank you. In moving forward, a couple of things I did want to share. So, I was recently, I had gone on some tours of some of the specialized schools that are in our area, and one of them had asked me if I would come, you know, invited me to their graduation, and then it was followed up. So, the Superintendent of Schools for the ESCNJ reached out to me. I spoke with him yesterday, and he wanted to thank me, and he was very pleased that I will be the speaker for the School for Lifelong Learning, and I'm very excited about their graduation. He is unable to be the actual speaker, although he will be in attendance. He's going to try and rush back, because he'll be in another building. And of course, he'll send some of the other administrators. And I said, "Not only would it be my pleasure, but I'm excited that I was even asked." It was very exciting to me and very pleasurable to take those tours, because those are our children. And that's something that I did want to share, and I did want to say that I was very thankful to him when he did reach out to me. And I will report back in June or July when I get to be the speaker, so I feel it's a great honor, so I wanted to share that honor with the board and with the public. Additionally, I want to thank Rabbi Spritzer. I believe I do have your name correct. It was very easy to remember, because it is, it happens to be my mother's maiden name. I don't think it's a relation, but you never know. That being said, I do agree 100%. We do have the task of looking at the calendar. We have the task of respecting the multicultural ethnicity that we have in this district, of understanding that we are a combination of many, many faiths, many, many cultures, many, many nationalities, and we want to do right by everybody. And in an effort to try and look at what we needed to do, we looked at the holiday of Rosh Hashanah, and I don't have to make this statement, but I'm very comfortable making it. I am of the Jewish persuasion, so there was no intent or any type of maliciousness or malintent of any kind in removing the second day, and I do observe both days, so I would be one of the people taking a personal day. But we tried to look to try and be fair, because as we move forward and we continue to look for each following year, we also want to respect Muslim holidays, and we want to respect, now we have Diwali, but it happens to be an in-service day, so it's not a day off. And we have EID, and we have Ramadan. So, when we look, we want to be fair. We know fair isn't always equal, but trying our very best. But I also want to be an active listener, and an active listener in a position of leadership and a position of authority listens and makes changes when appropriate. I had personal conversations with community members who reached out to me via email, who I called back. I had personal conversations and understandings with some board members. I had believed that there were some personal conversations, not only perhaps by Rabbi Spritzer, but other rabbis. And I do respect the fact that it was not well-received, and it could cause some undue stress. And with the light, with the understanding of the uptick, and I try not to use that word, because it sounds so casual, but with the exhaustive and unfortunate reemergence of antisemitism and terrible attacks that have happened, I do believe that it is appropriate for me to place back in the second day of Rosh Hashanah. So, please acknowledge it, that it is in for approval for tonight, as well as the fact that we are not going to be removing any holiday, but rather taking away the third snow day. Currently, the state has not passed any type of rec, although we hope that they would allow us to go to remote learning, and of course, not for an occasional snow day. Children need a day. We all need a day. But we have had days, thankfully, not recently, where you could be out five days because of snow, because of horrific ice. So, we are hoping that the state moves along a little quicker than they tend to, and perhaps that would be passed as a bill, and that would allow us to not be that concerned. I will let you know that we take every decision that we make not lightly, but I do want to say that the public spoke, and I listened, and I hope that that is something, once again, approval is always in the hands of the board, so the second day of Rosh Hashanah has been reinstated, and we will be very mindful of all of the holidays that are inclusive of all of our cultures moving forward for the year of, I dare say, 2023, 2024. At this time, I would like to acknowledge the retirements of three people. Ms. Doreen Malarni, who is a student assistance counselor, substance abuse counselor, they're known by both at the high school. I'm proud to say that she was with me in the old building of Applegarth, an acute home many, many years ago. Ms. Kathy Ielpi, who is a school counselor at Martin Township High School, and Ms. Nina Green, who's also a driver for our transportation department. Retirement is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for people to seek their next adventure. I wish all of them well on their newest adventure. Bear with me, because I have a lot of spaces here. So, there we go. At this time, it is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items A through R with exception of item P.
Are there motions?
Second.
Okay, is there any questions?
Yes.
Michelle?
We had a lot of changes to the agenda between this morning, well, actually, since the first agenda came out. I have three different agendas here. Could you tell me what occurred between this morning and now? Like, how many on this vote are different? Because I was not able to see them, because the last time this agenda was changed was at 2:32 PM today.
Well, first, I'm going to look at the names for you, but I think it's very important to note, because I think it's an excellent question. What we're really trying to do in May is get board approval if we were able to interview and bring on board some quality people. One specifically, I believe, is on here, is BCBA. And I'm answering your question.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to talk, yeah, I don't want to bring anybody.
No, I'm not talking names, I'm talking positions. So, I think it's important to note, because when you hire a certificated individual who's currently employed in another district, they have to give 60 days' notice. So, if we didn't push it through, and I apologize for any inconvenience that caused the board members, if we didn't push it through, that means they could not, they would not, it would be appropriate, they would not want to give their notice till June 16th, which would then push us back even further, and it can then cross over to the next school year. So, that's one example of one individual that was on here. There was another change to the agenda. It may not be additionally in personnel, but it was brought to our attention by the supervisor of special education, that we have a program that we want to make sure happens. It is happening before the June 15th Board of Education meeting. If we did not approve it, that was another one of the changes, then we would not be able to pay them legally, and therefore, we would have to exclude them, and we would have to remove the program. That was another change that was brought to my attention. Additionally, we were...
And these were all brought today?
Yes.
Yeah.
We didn't have the proposal. But I would rather err on being an inconvenience, and I do apologize, and even making myself look like I had caused inconvenience, than not do what I feel is responsible for what's, you know, what's good for the district and what's good for the kids, and that's why. And the third thing, which I think is also telling, is that we normally have a separation of our certificated reappointments versus our non-affiliates, and for purposes of following through with what I believe the board's request, based upon a situation that occurred last year, we had to go ahead and move everything up and not have the additional time. So, perhaps there were requirements of, whether it be an evaluation, or a rice meeting, or a resolution that would not normally have been there, so those things were added. So, this really did, you're absolutely right, it did cause a lot, and it is as thick, as I believe Mr. Chiarella did say.
And so, my next question is, so, the two in particular positions that you're talking about did not go through personnel? They were not recommended through personnel?
No, I believe that one did go through personnel. Didn't we discuss it knowing that you were meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So, sometimes what happens is, the recommendation is brought to us, in this case, it was by Director of People Personnel Services and the Supervisor of Special Education. It usually would be the principal. So, if we have someone, we've gone over the resume, we like what we see, we hear what the supervisor and the director said. I believe Dr. Lehman did interview him, and that was discussed.
Okay, were there more than one applicant in that particular one?
Yes.
Okay, and on the other one as well? The two that you just were referencing, were there more than one applicants?
Yes.
And they went through the process of...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for a quick clarification, you said with the exception of item R, are those...
P.
Oh, P, okay. And those removed? I just want to find, are those somewhere else on the agenda? I just want to, I might have missed it, I just want to make sure.
It will be a separate...
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Mrs. Tackley-Aferr, can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, except I need to recuse on item K, number 12, and item N, Zeromold, Zeromolda, sorry, Ms. Maralda, due to conflict.
Okay, Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chanley?
Somebody go?
Oh, okay, Dr. Lehman.
So, it is recommended by the Assistant Superintendent that the board approve the following certificated staff in letter P on the appropriate stepping guide for 2223.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Tackley-Aferr, can we have a roll call, please? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
It is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items by a nine-member vote, S through 18.
Make a motion?
So moved.
Did you say F?
S.
S.
S, I'm sorry.
That's what I was looking at, too.
No, that's okay. All right, we had a motion by Mrs. Ratner, and a second by Mrs. Belko. Any questions? Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, same question, please. How many on this, in this section were put in most recently? Like I said, I've marked my previous ones, but I didn't have time to download the others.
I'm just going through the names for you.
The same. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Tackley-Aferr, maybe we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I need to recuse on item AQ for C. Chanley, J. Higgins, S. Siddler, and P. Smith, and recuse on item AR for D. Ratner.
Okay, Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay.
If I would just may, I apologize, and I would not want to leave her out. So, Ms. Susan Pace is also retiring, and I do apologize. She is a current language advantage program teacher. She was an ELA teacher for many, many years at the middle school. I had the pleasure of working with her, and just to say one more comment, she was one of the first teams on Team Center to step up to be the avid team, and we actually did go for training together on more than one occasion. So, I would be remiss if I left her out, and I wish her well on her next endeavor. This is the 10-member vote. It is recommended by board approval, board action items A through R.
So moved. Do we have a second?
I have questions.
Do we, we need a second.
Second.
First, I want to acknowledge Mrs. Chanley, your efforts in, Dr. Lehman's efforts in changing the calendar. As per public opinion, you're right now, it's not the right time to bring about a change, but I do understand that you have a tough job in putting that 180-day calendar. With that acknowledgement, I'm going to add to your troubles by mentioning, again, you did already mention that Diwali is an in-service day, and you are trying to make that a holiday because a large part of our student body that celebrates that as their main holiday. Being a Muslim member of the Monroe community, I would be remiss if I did not mention that May 2nd, which was Eid this year, was also an NJSLA testing day, which I know we say in this district, we cannot, you know, every religious holiday cannot be given as a holiday to the entire district, and students are allowed excused absences. I have kept my children home for the last, you know, 12 years for Eid, and the teachers have been very accommodating with the work, but when there is any sort of test happening, children and parents both feel uncomfortable keeping the children home. And I know that it happened this year, but I'm looking at next year's calendar. April has TBD days for NJSLA testing. I would, and I know, you know, this calendar is, I'm not asking for any changes, I'm asking for the district to not schedule NJSLA on the day of Eid for 2022, 23 calendar as a favor to the Muslim community, because it's a difficult choice, even if it's an excused absence. And just for the record, I did ask the administration, there's 200 students took excused absence on May 2nd this year, of which many did not because of NJSLA testing. So, I hope this can be taken into consideration for April. I think the tentative date that I know of Eid is 21st April, which is a Friday, and April calendar says TBD for NJSLA. So, please do take it into consideration. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just would like to bring that up also. For years, I think our student body now is probably 40% or more Indian, right? And I've been asking for years for us to allocate a holiday. I've been, I was told by the previous superintendent and some board members of what we do in service day, so just, you know, that's where it should be celebrated. What, I don't, yeah, and I even said at the time, if you're giving a week for Christmas, you're giving me a week for Christmas or a week for Easter, and, you know, I want, I think that we should, I'm willing, as a Christian, to give up one of those days so that Diwali for Eid, so that we could, so that we could celebrate our entire community and not just, you know, things, times have changed, and as we've grown as a community and we've added members, it's, we have to, we have to also reflect that.
Understood and agreed.
Yes, Ms. Ratner?
Also, wanted to extend my thank you in the revision of the calendar and, you know, for listening to everybody and really hearing what we're saying. I wanted to clarify, you know, especially given that the in-service is on Diwali for staff members, because I was in two districts, and one did it one way and one did it another. Do they need to take one of their personal days, or is it like a completely excused absence as it's a religious holiday and they do not need to take one of those days?
I'm going to speak from actual knowledge. They would have to take a personal day, and I will tell you, the reason why I know this is because we have a very small group in our district of observant Jewish people. And observant Jewish people wouldn't just celebrate Rosh Hashanah for two days, but they also celebrate in between holidays. It's called the Yontef, and then they celebrate an exuberant amount of days. So, from personal experience, the way it works is we go off the federal holiday list, and it, what happens is, we may not tell them that they cannot take the days, they must be allowed to take the days, but if they have no days left, they would take the days without pay. So, although I cannot speak on Diwali, and I would not speak on EID, I can speak on the Jewish holidays, because I had a speech pathologist in my school who took off, because she was observant, as you know, September, you basically don't go to school. So, she took off almost the whole month of September, and she took off days and Passover that perhaps I wouldn't take off. So, what she did was, she utilized her sick days, we did allow them as sick days. We did not penalize her. If she had no sick days, then she would do it without pay. If she chose to do without pay, she also was permitted to do that. So, I would make the assumption and the leap that any other religious persuasion would be handled the same way.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I also had a question regarding board action item H, which is the resolution abolishing the Director of Security position and establishing the position of Director of Security in residency. And I looked through the description of the new position, and, you know, as you know, when we gave the additional responsibilities of the Oprah to, you know, Mrs. Zelinski, that was, you know, we modified the job description, or we added it as a stipend, and I guess I'm just curious where the difference is in this in regards to, because I'm assuming from what I saw that the qualifications are very similar for both. So I don't understand why there couldn't be a modification of the job responsibilities instead of an, an abolishment of a, of that position, and having to, you know, repost it, pay for posting, looking for somebody new. So I guess that, I just wanted to clarify what the reason for that was.
I, I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna acquiesce to the attorney, because I'm not sure what I can say and cannot say regarding confidentiality, so I think it'd be best if he spoke.
Okay.
I am somewhat limited as to what I can say.
Okay.
Because it does touch on personnel, and it does touch on specifics. It's a position that affects one person, so anything I say, we're going to know who I'm talking about.
Okay.
So I am somewhat limited as to the substance of what I could say. The answer to your question is, it, it could have been handled that way. It, it could have been just a change to a job description without an abolishment of the position and a creation of a new position. That being said, it easily also meets, you, you can meet two different standards under the law. So it, it would meet the standard for adding on to a job description, but it also meets the standards, which are really set by the New Jersey Supreme Court, as to what would constitute a substantially different position. The addition of residency investigations clearly makes this position substantially different under the standards set by the New Jersey Supreme Court in the case of Denary versus Passaic County Regional High School.
That's impressive.
A case I actually, a case I actually argued before the Supreme Court.
Okay, less impressive, I was like, how do you have all these court cases memorized? But I was gonna say, it's pretty impressive. Okay, I appreciate the clarification. And then just the other thing, I was looking over the professional development, and, you know, I fully intend to vote yes on it, but I was, not that I need to say that, but I was wondering if you could just tell us about what the Model Schools Conference entails, what that is pertaining to.
So we have an opportunity, whether you be a principal, an assistant principal, supervisor, superintendent, assistant superintendent, to partake in professional development. The Model Schools Conference is going to be one that is really opened up to all of those people, but it also specifically has very, has different segments and different daily conferences that lead towards leadership, student engagement, special education. It's a conference that provides, provides an overall understanding in many different areas. I will let you know that I pride myself when I go to a conference, because it is about me. When I go to a conference, when I bring something back and we turnkey it, it happens, and I'm going to just make one comment. So we have a Technology Student Association, and many years ago, I had gone to that conference, no one had ever heard of it. After coming back from that conference, we created that particular program in our schools. We have it at the middle school now, and it is something that leads to Project Lead the Way in the high school, and we win accolades, and it is, it is very successful, so I, I do believe that sometimes it behooves us to partake in a conference. That conference has so many different, and I'll be happy to report back on it when I return, but it has so many different segues that I couldn't sit here tonight and tell you what they are.
Right.
Because you have all different options, as you know, you are an educator, so you are aware of that.
And I was gonna say, there are certain conferences that you learn so much. I know a lot of music teachers like to go to the Midwest Conference, which is, you know, several days instead of the one-day state. I was just curious, like, also if it was for, like, a model school certification, or like a blue ribbon or anything of that nature that was part of it. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Arminio?
I think Mr. Rutske is first.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, if you don't mind, I just, because I'm gonna piggyback a little bit on Kate's question. So with regards to adding the residency to letter H, I assume we did have somebody doing residency the last few years? Somebody must have been, right?
Yes, he retired.
In what?
Retired.
I'm sorry.
He retired.
He retired, gotcha. Okay, so that's why we're now making this adjustment. Okay, just curious, thank you.
Ms. Arminio?
Okay. And when we changed some job descriptions in the past, did we not go through policy committee first? I believe we did to the secretary for the, for the Covenantial Secretary, and we changed job description, and we weren't able to hire someone until the job description was changed?
I believe that was because the custodial of records was part of the policy.
Okay, so a job description doesn't need to go through policy at all?
Our job descriptions don't go through policy.
I would have to look at the board's bylaws, but based upon my decades of experience, the answer would clearly be no.
Okay, and I just feel a little uncomfortable with doing an abolishment and an establishing the position at the same time, if that seems to be the only way to do it, I understand, but it seemed, and again, this was discussed in a committee meeting, and this is our first, we, you know, it might have been easily spoken of in a closed session.
There's rarely one way to do it.
Right, so that, it's a little uncomfortable to do it like this for me.
It's, it was, in my judgment, the most efficient way of doing it, to take three actions in one integrated action. Since they all were interrelated, it made sense to me. I can see why it might make another, a board member facing this for the first time with less background than I had uneasy, and I have no problem with that. If you wanted, it could be split if that was the consensus of the board.
Could, could, well, may I?
If you wanted to divide, if you wanted to divide this omnibus resolution into three separate parts, it could be done, it would just take a little time, I'd have to do some drafting. It wouldn't be my recommendation. My recommendation would be to have more discussion about it, so that your lack of ease with the, with the motion was resolved. I don't, I don't think merely splitting a larger resolution into three separate actions is going to make you feel any better, because it's, in essence, going to be the exact same action, just more voting. I don't know why that would, that would improve anything.
Well, I, I just, I would have preferred having a closed session's informational thing, I think, for everyone.
It's on the agenda for closed session.
It's on the agenda for closed session.
Well, then why are we voting on it now?
And the other question is like-
Can we table this until?
I would say not table it. What I would say is just reorder the agenda, which is an administrative action, the chair could do.
Okay.
Without, without a vote.
And wait until after our closed session? That would be more prudent, I think, and I would-
Right, I, I also, there's information, additional information that I have that would give, give you a better understanding of why, I understand, this is somewhat unusual, and maybe unexpected, and does cause some, some issues, but the information, I think, will clarify why this particular action was undertaken.
Procedurally, if I could ask a question, so when the Personnel Committee meets, and it's a closed session, right, we're meeting as a committee, but after that meeting, that committee is free to circulate that information with the other board members, right? It's not a secret meeting, because it's the Personnel Committee, it's just not in purview of the public like the other committee meetings, but after that meeting, between that meeting and the board meeting, we're allowed to ask questions of one another and deliberate in non, not in a quorum, but-
For example, and I think we've gone over this before, I mean, I'm sure Vito went over it, for example, you wouldn't want to, on an email, hit a reply all-
Right.
-to the entire board. That, that's, you know, ABCs.
Right, I'm saying, like, as a board, we need to maybe get in the habit of doing that.
For example, if a committee were to generate minutes of its, of its meeting and make those minutes available, that would be permissible. If one person saw something on the agenda that was impacted by what the discussions of the Personnel Committee, they clearly could contact the chair of the Personnel Committee and ask for clarification. That would be no problem at all.
Because I get it, I'd be confused if I hadn't been in that personnel-
It's only when a quorum of board members conduct business outside the auspices of a board meeting that is a problem.
Ms. Bora?
Less than six people is never a problem.
And thank you for asking that, Karen, because it does, it does put me at ease. And I, and for full, and in full transparency, I have not seen to change agendas, so I had had discussions with Mrs. Kirby and Mr. Chanley yesterday, based on this gen, you know, this on the agenda, it was not on the agenda yesterday. It was put on, this item was put on the agenda today, and, and to what you responded to, Mrs. Ratner, I just want to understand that there are two ways legally to do this, because of what you know, we are doing this a certain way.
There's a business reason for doing it this way.
Right, so, and so because we are not aware of it, it is right now, to vote on this right now, till we are aware of the whole situation, so this, this item on the agenda should not be voted on right now, everybody.
Right, I'm, I'm going to apologize, because I apparently didn't make, that was my intent in the beginning, that this appear in the agenda after-
Right, which is how, yes.
-the executive session. I apparently did not transmit that knowledge to, or instructions to the administration well enough. And I believe that's my fault, that could just be, I'm not here a lot, I don't, I'm not that familiar with every personality, but, or I'm somewhat obtuse when I speak.
Michelle?
Oh, and just to Ms. Bierman's suggestion, I, I appreciate that. However, not everybody gets equal and the same information. I think it behooves us to, to deal with these kinds of things as a board, like in closed session. I know that we try to have everybody go back to the committee meetings to get ourselves up to date with things, however, I don't know in terms of really what our obligation is to act as a board and to all hear the same thing at the same time. So it would still be my preference when these things come up to go into closed session, so we can all know what each other is talking about, thinking, and sometimes in the translation from different people who discuss things, things get, someone hears one thing and another person hears another, and I, I, again, I will, I will press to prefer us acting as a board. Thank you.
Ms. Ratner?
I just wanted to also mention, because you had mentioned if it's less than six, it's okay to speak. I don't know if this is something that would be allowed, but because there are five members on the Personnel Committee, is it a possibility that going forward, so that the four of us who are not, five, four of, five of us who are not on the Personnel Committee are more aware of what's happening there, especially when it's something that we're voting on, is there a way to have a discussion or a meeting with either the board president or the superintendent, so we are more informed before the meeting of what's happening? And then, I guess just the other question that I did have is that it was mentioned that the person who had been doing the residency had retired, is that a recent retirement?
No.
Okay.
Nobody to do it.
So no one has been doing it for a while? Okay.
I did, if I may?
The position was out there and posted, and, and it was not.
Nobody-
It wasn't that we weren't looking to fulfill it, nobody appropriate applied.
Can I make a comment regarding this particular situation?
Sure.
Without, no names. This is a point to note. This situation, which will be discussed in closed session, would not be a problem right now if my non-affiliates would have been board-approved in June, because what would have happened was, this resolution, which you literally got today, I don't want to thank Mr. Bash, who designed it and wrote it, was because there is a resolution that the non-affiliates' discussion needs to happen before May 15th. I'm not a sorcerer, so what that means is, all of the non-affiliates would have then been, on the June 15th meeting, we would not be having this conversation, because this would have been discussed in closed session, and everything that I am allowed to share with you would have been shared with you. This would not have been looking like, that you were, I'm going to use the word blindsided, but because there's a resolution stating that all non-affiliates need to be discussed for board appropriateness by May 15th, it pushed my hand that this had to come out of nowhere, which it seems, to be moved up to today, which is May 11th, so it's almost like we're once again putting the cart before the horse.
You may not remember this, but I'm pretty sure if I remember this, it was this board that forced that issue.
Oh, I remember, I was, oh, I remember. So I'm being respectful of not only the board's desire, but I'm also being respectful, respectful of a legal resolution that says I must do it.
Okay.
So I do think that once we go into closed session, there'll be a lot of clarity, but I did want to apologize, especially because the public is watching, that this was done the way it was done, truly to abide by a resolution that I would not have been abiding by.
Well, that's how important public discussion and deliberation is, so I thank you.
My pleasure. Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I just have one more question or another agenda item, and my, my numbering might not be clear, but it's about Naviance, and I think, Dr. Lehman, would you be answering that question? I just need a little clarity on the numbers. There is a part of Naviance's contract that says that EDOCs is for 644 students, whereas everything else kind of reflects the high school enrollment. Is there a reason that we do EDOCs only for that many? And I think it's a per student or per account cost to that.
I don't know that, to be honest with you. I will get you that answer, but it's consistent, that contract is a consistent contract that we, we have from last year. So we, obviously, it's, Naviance's is student-related. We do have a Naviance integration at the middle school as well, so maybe there's 600 numbers related to the middle school. I'll get you an answer on that, though. There certainly, we negotiate, we revisit, we revisit those contracts every year, but that exact 648, I'll have to get some detail for you.
Okay, I will, I will. Do I, can I, do I do it before? Now?
You can do it right now. I think this would be appropriate.
I think it would be appropriate, so. So, at advice of counsel, because there was, because the roll call, the roll call wasn't done, but because the board action was requested, and there was a first, and then a second, I'm going to throw it back to Mr. Bash, so he could explain why we would need a motion to amend, to make sure that we don't vote on that until after.
Right, because my life is just so exciting, I read Robert's rules. Because the motion is pending, what we need to do is have a motion to amend the pending motion. Once there's, and then there would be a first on that, a second, discussion, and a vote. After that is done, assuming from what I can tell, the consensus of the board seems to be clearly, to sever letter H for subsequent to the executive session, I assume that will pass, then we go back to the pending motion, which is everything less H, and then you can vote on that.
I'll, I'll make a motion to amend.
Is that, is that clear? Ms. Ratner has a question.
I was, I was gonna make the motion, but Ms. Arminio can make it, I'll, I'll second her if she wants to.
I'll make a motion to amend this, shall I say it now, to exclude H?
Amend pending, amend the pending motion to delete letter H for subsequent action.
There you go.
You can definitely say it then.
You, you couldn't have said it any better.
Thank you.
I second that.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, we can have a roll call. Mrs. Tagley-Fair?
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now we do a-
Now we gotta recommend again.
Now, the pending motion is already-
Here.
Here, and you were in the middle of discussion. If there's any further discussion, this would be the time, if not time for call again.
Okay.
Well, are, are we?
In closed session.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what I'm waiting for.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Tagley-Fair, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Ratner?
To confirm, this is AR minus H.
With except for item H.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner, yes? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes. Thank you.
It is recommended that the board approve board action items S through Y.
Second.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Tagley-Fair, may we have a roll call?
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
And our next item is our Business Administrators' Report and Recommendations.
I'm not sure why I didn't vote on that. All that stuff, staff field trips, PDs.
They were separated, middle school versus high school, so it's a separate list.
And HIBs are not high school?
Right.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Okay, our next item is the Business Administrators' Report and Recommendations. Mrs. Chanley, you will be your last this evening.
On my page 73, wait, let me just double-check something. There we go. Just A through S, here we go. It is recommended that the board approve action, board action A through M, 10-member vote.
Motion.
Second, discussion. So on this one, I don't understand why N and O are separated out, I just want to get out. I just want to get an understanding on that. I think that should be part of 10, and it should just be one report here.
N and O?
M? So it's a transfer, and then it's the financial reports. We haven't done that in past.
Yeah.
We have?
No.
I don't know. I'm saying, I don't think they're, that that's part of the legitimate list of what the Jamesburg rep shouldn't be voting on.
Right. No, I, I, you're right.
All right. So then it should be one, all straight through O, 10-member vote.
Yes. A, A through M.
To my statements, to 10-member vote. Can just move it over?
I'd need more information to give me the voting motion.
It's not specific to the high school.
It's not, yeah, right. It's not specific.
It's just overall budget.
Right.
If, if it impacts the overall budget, then yes, Mr. Rutske will be entitled to vote on that. And yes, I agree on the financial cash record.
So it should be A through O?
Yes.
Is that sufficient to say that?
So we need another?
A through O.
But we already have a motion on the floor, so we need to amend that.
A motion to amend the motions to include.
Sorry, I meant to send an email on that earlier today. I ran out of minutes.
I'll make a motion that we amend adding N and O.
I'll second.
To the vote.
Okay. So we have a roll call on that?
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
I have to recuse myself on A, number two, and yes on everything else.
We're voting on the amendment.
What? Oh, yes.
We're voting on the amendment.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Now we need the other.
Now we can.
Okay.
Now you wanna do your?
Don't we have to have the vote now on the actual original motion? Okay.
Oh, you want me to reread the original motion?
Yes.
And include the A through O. It is recommended that the board approve board action items A through O for a 10-member vote.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, recuse on A two.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes to all, and I recuse on A two.
Ms. Ratner?
Uh, yes, I'm going to Epstein on letter H, but yes to the rest.
Ms. Belko?
Yes to all.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes to all.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes to all.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Uh, yes to all, recuse on A two.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, thank you. Now, our next item on the agenda is the board president's report. Again, I want to thank everybody who was involved this evening in our celebration of our staff members of the year. It truly was a wonderful event. So last Friday, as we heard, myself, Ms. Bierman, Ms. Arminio, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Fabiano, went and met with Senator Greenstein at the Department of Education offices. At the meeting was Kevin Demmer, who is the Assistant Commissioner and Chief Financial Officer at the Department of Education. We went through the questions that were sent by our community, and we talked at length about the funding formula and the shortcomings and how they affect Monroe. Equalization aid was discussed, and they explained why we do not get any, but we did make the case for them to reexamine the formula, and they should be taking into account the unique situation in Monroe, where we have approximately 50% seniors' population opposed to the surrounding districts that have 20% senior population. And that was basically the crux of the issue. We had discussed the previous legislation that Senator Greenstein had brought forth that never did go out of the committee, but we asked that, when the Department of Education is looking at the formula, if they will take a look at that legislation as well, because it, it addressed some of the real issues that we have in Monroe.
Madam President, it's, it did come out of committee. It's on the governor's desk. He hasn't signed it yet.
Which one?
The legislature about the funding, the funding?
No, Senator Greenstein's legislation.
The task?
No, not the task force. The legislation that she had introduced about four or five years ago. And I said, in that legislation, yes, in that legislation had detailed calculations for how it would help Monroe, but that never did get passed. So looking at, remember, we had discussed if they could look at that, yes, when they're reexamining the formula. We asked again about having a liaison on the task force. That is up for approval. They said they're not sure yet if there will be any opportunity other than for elected officials to be on the task force, but we did stress, all of us there, that we would like a representative from Monroe Township to sit on that task force, and they said they will consider it if they allow anybody outside of an elected official to be on the task force. We did have some discussion of full-day kindergarten and how our overcrowding, coupled with our budget restrictions, has not allowed us to offer full-day K, and they did indicate that there is not a mandate coming in the immediate future. We did speak at length about our upcoming referendum. Mr. Demmer said that petitioning the state, this was something that I, I thought we all found pretty interesting, that petitioning the state after multiple referendums fail should not be something that a district looks to as a thing to get their referendum passed. He said that can take many years in court to actually get to happen, and there are only very limited cases in which districts have accomplished, accomplished that. He said there's no such thing that a state comes in after a failed referendum and builds a state-model school. These are things that we have heard for several years as we're going through referendum processes, that if we don't pass a referendum, the state's gonna come in and build us a box, and we're not gonna have the type of school we want. They said that is not accurate, and that is not something that the state would do. The Department of Education also talked about debt service aid. I know myself and Mr. Tag shared some email messages today. When we were there, it was, Mr. Demmer said that a district gets at a minimum 40% of debt service aid for capital investment in school facilities. He said that was something that we should be really explaining to the community as we're going out for referendum, because that's a large source of debt service aid back to the district. Now, he said, you know, for instance, $100 million referendum, the state's not going to write you a $40 million check, but he said it comes off of the, annually, that comes in debt service aid. Like I said, Mr. Tag reached out today to somebody at the Department of Education, and it was explained a little bit differently, and it didn't, there seemed to be some discrepancy. So I, I asked Mrs. Chanley if she could possibly work with Mr. Tag and set up a meeting, so that we can have that gentleman and the gentleman we spoke with, and some of us here on the board and administration, sit down and really get an understanding of the state aid. Because what he had mentioned to us, I know surprised all of us sitting there, because we had never heard about this 40%. And they did follow up and send to me, which I, I shared with Mr. Tag, the calculation is part of the statute. It's a very long statute. It's a very long calculation, but in there, it did have the minimum of 40%. So I think that is something that we definitely need to look into more in-depth, because the Department of Education was saying, well, when you're going out for a referendum, you really need to explain what the, the state is going to contribute to it. And they were shocked that we didn't understand the 40% from the state. So I think we need to get clarification on that and get a real understanding, because he said that is what you should be, you know, telling your community as you're going out, speaking to the referendum, that yes, you have to approve $100 million, but then this is the amount that you're going to get back from the state. And we really need to have a clear understanding, because I don't think we've had that in the past, of what the state is actually contributing, and that can help our community then support it, because they'll know that there is funding coming from the state for that. So that was, I think that's pretty much the gist of the, the meeting. I don't know if anybody else has any comments from the meeting. One thing that Senator Greenstein did also say, we brought up, I know Michelle had talked about the affordable housing and how that is affecting us here as well with the building. We did ask Senator Greenstein, since she does have access to a lot of our adult communities, and she is, goes through them regularly and speaking to those communities, if, when we are ready to bring this out to, our plans out to the community, if she will work with us and bring those out to the community too, in support of helping us get a referendum passed in our, in our town. And she said she did have to look into, if she, any ethical issues that that may pose, but she said she would look into it, she would get back to us, and any help that she could give to us to get the, the message out to those communities as well and reach out to those constituents, she was more than willing to help us in our efforts to pass the referendum. So, yes.
And she was open to maybe participating in committee-level meetings. She was a little hesitant at a full board meeting with open public forum. Her impression of us is not favorable as a community concerning, a little bit of angst, and she didn't seem prepared to want to face that. But in a situation like a committee meeting where she could get information across and a little bit less of an atmosphere, you know, we might have access to her there. And then certainly, she seemed enthusiastic about helping us with those senior communities and access there, so that was very encouraging.
Yes. And that concludes my board president's report. Any questions on that? Any other comments from anyone that attended?
Just a comment that, thank you to everybody that went on a Friday morning at 10 o'clock to Trenton and did this for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. The morning after the, at a board meeting.
Wow. Madam President, I would, I would actually sort of like to toot our own horns. I'd like to thank my colleagues who had to take off from work, either not get paid, or take a sick day, or a vacation day, you know, on top of our volunteer. And so I, I usually don't say I about that, but I, but my colleagues and I did do that for the love of this community and the, you know, academic pursuit, you know, for our children. So I want to thank, and it was very nice. We had a very good meeting. I'm not sure how much was absorbed. They kept telling us all the things we should do, and I must say that over the years, based on the people who went to this, this meeting, we did just about everything that was suggested by them, I think to their chagrin, because they kept saying, well, maybe if you do this, and maybe if you do that. And all of us, with, with our experience and the, the activities that we have been involved in over the years, we have just about hit every recommendation that the state had for us to do to discuss it with our community.
Yes.
So I want to thank my colleagues for that effort.
Yes, and thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is other board of education business. Mrs. Belko?
Yeah, I just, there's a couple of things. One, I want to acknowledge all of you who did take the time off on the Friday, and yes, it was after a board meeting. So that can be a little tough to roll out of bed the next morning. But I also, I just want to mention that another program that's going on with our Unified here at the high school, I believe it's on the 19th, the Veterans Program that they do every year out here. You know, I just think it's, it's amazing how we continue to recognize our veterans and the school involvement in that. It is always a day that is thought of very highly in my house. And I also wanted to just recognize those that retired in, in this month. I don't know Doreen Mulroney, but I do know Mrs. Kathy Ielpy and Ms. Nina Green. Ms. Nina Green has been the bus driver for my daughter for a very long time, and I, I don't know how I'm gonna go home and tell her this tonight, but, you know, she, like anything else, she'll just have to get over it. But always been professional, always been polite, always been on time, always just been, you know, the, the best, you know, bus driver that you could have. If I had to pick one every year, I would pick her. And then, I can't tell you enough about Kathy Ielpy and her ability to be there for my family, and I know that she's done this for other families, in some of the darkest times that we ever had, and this was pre-COVID. And she, you know, literally worked with my children so that they could graduate high school. And, you know, those who know me know exactly what I'm talking about. And she not only was there, you know, before, you know, before that, but she was also there way, when my son was here. And she's going to be missed here, because she really was an incredible force here at the high school. And she's gonna be another one who's gonna be really, really missed. We're losing a lot of really good, talented teachers. I hope that we can replace them with just as good, talented people who want, who have the love and the passion that these folks that have, that are retiring do.
Thank you. Ms. Rutske?
May I? Thank you. A couple of things, if you'll allow me to, I have three things regarding Jamesburg. I'd like to just go over and present tonight. So I'm wearing the blue ribbon tonight, because, and I know we brought this up, I can't believe how many months it's been already, but the event finally happened on March 22nd, and we haven't had a, well, we had a board meeting that I wasn't at in April. So this is my first opportunity to speak of it, and just to make it official. We had a ceremony, we had a blue ribbon, we cut it. It was very exciting, and I'm very proud of the Jamesburg community. So if you'll allow me, I just have two quick lines to read about that. So JFK Elementary School has been selected as a recipient of the 2021 National Blue Ribbon Schools Program as an exemplary achievement gap closing school. Schools in this category have made significant advances in closing subgroup achievement gaps in English, language arts, and mathematics over the past three to five years. We are proud of the students and staff at JFK School for this achievement. And as per their website, the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. The coveted National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging and engaging content. So that was, it was a really big deal.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I, on behalf of Jamesburg, we appreciate that. As big of achievement as that is for the whole district, a little smaller achievement, very personal to me. So the Middlesex County Secondary Principals Association had their Outstanding Student Awards Dinner on Tuesday, April 26th, just two weeks ago. And so what that is, it's each high school from Middlesex County gets to put forth a student that represents their school and to the county. So from my perspective, it was, it's always an honor to have a Jamesburg student put in that position to represent the whole high school. It was even better, more humbling, but proud, honored to have it be John Rutske. So I, I will definitely stand tall on that one. It was, it was, it was a great night. Dr. Higgins was awesome to have dinner with him and have him say kind words about John, and it was a great night. And just a little asterisk on the whole night, to, to our excitement, there was another Jamesburg student there who goes to the East Brunswick Botec for interior design, and she was chosen as their representative for the county. So of all the county, Jamesburg's the only school to have two representatives for the whole county. So just the way it worked out, and we obviously couldn't have been prouder. So that was, that was another big highlight, both for Jamesburg, but also for the Rutske family.
And also for Monroe Township High School, John Rutske.
Thank you. Thank you very much. He's a good boy. So the third thing is, so the Jamesburg Board of Ed put forth a resolution that they asked me to read here tonight at this meeting, and hopefully you'll consider it. The, at the request of the Monroe Board of Education, let it be resolved that the Board of Education of Jamesburg shall request of the Monroe Board of Education, that the Monroe Board of Education extend an invitation to the Jamesburg Liaison or board designate to participate in committee meetings where issues that impact Jamesburg students and the Jamesburg Public Schools will be discussed. And so, something for you to consider, that was something that Jamesburg started talking about after the finance meeting earlier this year. We would have appreciated being involved in that committee meeting, and, you know, if it could be seen, to have somebody not sit on the committee meeting that night, but have the Jamesburg rep sit on the committee meeting that night, again, whether it's finance, whether it's BG and T because they're discussing the high school, or whatever. Not for the littlest of things, but for things that are substantial, we would appreciate that. So it's just a resolution that I will pass on, and you folks can consider that and do with it, hopefully what you will, but hopefully you'll consider it. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ratner?
First thing, and I meant to bring this up under, when we're talking about the superintendent's report, I think we had started with personnel. I just wanted to find out if for our June meeting, because it's our final one of the year, if we can get, I guess, what the final sum of this annual cost was for the virtual home instruction. Obviously, I wouldn't expect you guys to have that right now. I just wanted to put it out there to possibly have for that, the following month. And then, I wanted to also mention that the, you know, the reception was wonderful for Teachers of the Year. I enjoyed the jazz band performance. The food was delicious. To give you a very, very quick story about how amazing our students are, I was up there getting some of our food and passed by the steak sandwiches, and I said, do any of these not have mayonnaise? And they're like, no, they all have them. And I was like, oh, okay. And then I continued to walk. And then one of the students said, I can make you one without mayonnaise. And I'm like, no, it's okay. You really don't have to. Then they were like, how many do you want? And I'm like, just one. And then they brought me three. So, you know, I really, I ate one and a half and I couldn't eat anymore, but I really did appreciate it. I also wanted to wish a happy Nurses Week to all of our school nurses, also to Mrs. Belko on our board. Because, you know, we obviously got to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week last week. And, you know, I want to recognize her for what she does at work. I wanted to, this is a little personal for me, extend congratulations to the sixth grade Performing Arts Department, Band Chorus Jazz Band Percussion Ensemble. They went to their competition at Great Adventure last Friday. It was raining and cold. And I can tell you, my husband came home like shivering and soaked. But they also were so excited because there were no lines for the rides. So they all got to go on everything. And they did get all first and second place finishes for all of the performance ensembles that they have. So kudos to them. And then I always tend to go towards the music because that's where I live. But I also was made aware that one of our lacrosse players was the GMC Player of the Week, Christian Updale. And so I wanted to at least try to branch towards athletics a little bit because I know I always, you know, go one way. And then finally, I wanted to mention that I, two things. I am attending the NJ SBA Delegate Assembly as the NJ SBA Delegate Representative for Monroe this Saturday. So if there are any board members who read over that and have any questions that they want me to bring up of that nature, let me know. And I also, you know, listen, I'm, I'm Jewish. I've, I've, I don't want to, I'm not going to get into it too much because I really don't want to. And I'm trying to stay off social media as much as possible, other than posting cute pictures of my kids. But I really just hope, you know, when myself and Mrs. Bora and Mrs. Fabiano ran, our slogan was Monroe United. And I really just feel like there is such a divide in our community. And I'm not going to blame any one person because I think everyone is guilty of doing something. But I really do hope that as a community, we can start to heal and move forward and really come together for all the things that we all know are really important. This isn't just to the board or just to the community, it's to everybody. Because I think that we really can make a huge difference. We have an amazing community, we have an amazing school district. And I really just hope that the back and forth negativity, you know, myself included, I'm not going to say I'm perfect, can cease. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chirowa?
I just have a couple of things. So first, Paul, Mr. Rutske, congratulations. And I could vouch that John Rutske is a very fine young man. Not only has he swayed my daughter, who absolutely loves him, and says, he's my best friend. But now my son Anthony has been sneaking out. And I said, where are you going? Wait, I'm, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to see John Rutske. Okay, that's okay. I just want to know where he's going, what he's up to. But so congratulations on that. Congratulations on the Blue Ribbon School for JFK. That's, that's huge. I want to congratulate Ms. Bora because I don't know if that was missed by a lot of people when we had Unified Basketball in the awards, that her son was one of the, you know, one of the, one of the members. And so I wanted to congratulate her on that. I think that's a wonderful thing. She has, she is raising wonderful boys, wonderful kids, so.
Also a member of All-State Chorus. She didn't, she didn't say it, but that was, she was one of those, he was one of those 18.
Oh.
So she's trying to sneak it by.
The, I want to also thank Senator Greenstein for meeting with everyone and for the board members who were able to go and meet and, and discuss this. The 40% debt service floored me. I've been on the board for a long time, I didn't know that. The fact that three times and the state comes in and builds a box, it wasn't true, floored me because Ms. Kalipanovich has told us that year after year after year. And now it turns out that we have another untruth from, from, from that, that, from that group. And also I just want to say that on Sunday, we're going to celebrate OM and its, the 5K run. So I'm looking forward to that. And hopefully we'll see everybody from our community there. And so it's a great, great, it's, it's, it's a great event. OM, my, my, Angelina was in OM's class or in a class with OM, as you know. And, you know, so it's, that, it's, it's. He would have graduated with her. She's graduated, so, and, and, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good graduating class. I didn't know, I was going to ask, like, I don't know the background of OM. So if at any point in time, anybody wants to enlighten me, share some stories, I'm very curious and interested. But, so it's Sunday?
Sunday, at the, yeah.
At the park?
At the park.
I think 8:00 AM is check-in?
And you can register online.
If you want to register in a group, I formed a group and it's called the Slow Pokes. So you're welcome to join. Right now, I'm the only person in the group.
I should be there. I'll be there, yeah.
And that's it.
The mile or the 5K?
5K, but it might be, I might do it at one mile an hour.
Mrs. Retner, can I just ask a quick question regarding what he mentioned?
Sure.
Because I didn't realize that this would have been the year that he would have graduated. And this may have already been discussed, but is there anything that may be done in honor of him at the graduation? I wasn't sure if that was something that's allowed or not.
Okay, certainly. So I have a close relationship with the family. And when he was diagnosed, it was, I want to say fourth grade and, I don't know if it's fourth grade or fifth grade, but he wound up passing while in my school when I was the principal. And that year, it would have been his graduation year. So we did do something at a very high level. His sister Yashashri came up, received his diploma. There was a chair for him with his, with a shirt on it, Smiles for OM. And it was something that we made a decision, and I did get approval from the superintendent at the time, to do it. However, there has since been some committees, and I did speak, it's funny you brought it up because I spoke with Dr. Higgins tonight because Yashashri did reach out to me again to say, do you know if there'll be anything at the high school? And I said, well, respectfully, I have to acquiesce to the principal and see if anything, but I will get back to you. So I spoke with Dr. Higgins and there will not be. And not to say that he isn't very important, because he is very important. But as he explained, I believe that this committee was created and moving forward, they felt that they would not memorialize any type of situation. We did lose a child this year. We did lose a child this year, very sadly in a car accident, who would have been a senior and he's not being memorialized anyway. I totally respect Dr. Higgins' opinion. I would be happy to share that with the family. And I do think that it was a very special circumstance in the middle school because he was a student that we thought, they thought he had beat it. He had come back to school, he was out again, came back to school. So I do think it was a little bit different circumstances. So that's just information.
Thanks. Does anybody have anything else? Ms. Bora?
I do want to congratulate all the retirees and thank them, but I want to make a special mention for Mr. Pepe. I am a Barclaybrook Brookside mom, have been for years. And he will be missed with basketball with Mr. Pepe. He was one of the coolest administrators. He is, sorry, not was, he is. And all my children thought so. And I know a lot of Brookside family is going to be very heartbroken because Mr. Pepe is moving on for better opportunities. Congratulations to him and we will miss him a lot. I do want to change from all the, and take a moment, Madam President, to speak to the public on a matter that is, my personal opinion is bearing down on this board. This district is trying to hire a full-time superintendent. And seeing how we have treated our acting superintendent with a non-stop onslaught of public insults, it is my fear that eligible candidates will think twice before applying. I want to go on record today to state that Monroe Township Education Facebook page is not an official district page. Monroe Township Watchdog, MTBOE Objective, and all such Facebook pages are not official school district township pages. They are privately owned pages. I urge, I urge all taxpayers to not form their opinions and perceptions based on the narratives on those pages. Some of those are selectively posted to spread misinformation and sadly sometimes disinformation. Members of the public should ask questions, but not on Facebook. Ask them through official emails and/or phone calls to district. If you don't get answers, bring it here to the board meeting. We as board members are not supposed to respond to public on Facebook on board-related issues. We are taught in our trainings not to do so. I get that everyone is busy in their personal lives and don't have the time to come to meetings and are looking for quick information. We will continue to work towards making more and more information accessible more easily as a district through official website and Facebook page. But in the meantime, I urge taxpayers to not accept answers to their concerns from people who are not district employees or elected officials. Unknowingly, by asking questions to and getting responses from such individuals, you are helping certain people with their personal or political agendas and narratives. And our student success is indirectly but surely getting impacted. For all our challenges as a district, we do have an extremely hardworking administrative, teaching, and support staff. Let's enable them to contribute to the best of their ability to our student success. Let's tackle issues as a solution-oriented society without people bashing. In no way am I asking the public to not stay involved, not question the administrators and the board members. We need you to hold us accountable. But let's do it all without knowingly or unknowingly feeding into personal and political agendas. Tonight, I urge Monroe to get united behind education. It will get crazier as we get into the election season. Let us pledge to protect our children from the impact of personal and political fights on Facebook that are making their way into this room. Thank you.
We didn't plan that. Ms. Arminio?
Thank you so much. That I absolutely think it's 100% right. And I hope, I hope we all listen to that.
And can I just add a single statement here? I, in my four months, have seen how much time and effort each one of you has to put in to do what you do, administrators, board members. And, and I did not know this when I was there. There's a lot that I'm learning from this seat. And as a result, I feel like we have to use that, knowing what goes on from there and knowing what goes on from here, if we can only communicate to this public. This town is beautiful. This town is full of amazing people. We can do better. Thank you.
I cannot speak as eloquently as Ms. Bora, but I did want to say I cannot stay silent and consent to any disparaging remarks either from my, my colleagues on the board or casting aspersions to anyone in the public. I also wish the public would bring factual information to, to the board so we can act in the best interest of the children, but not misinformation. And sometimes I think disinformation as well. And on that note, I would ask our administration to remove the barriers that have gone up to the public. I, I don't think, I am certainly not in fear of, of the public. And, you know, I'm grateful to our, our policemen and our law enforcement. But I also don't think that that sends a good message of inclusion and welcoming. So I would ask that we reconsider the barriers, both physically and, I guess, theoretically that we have put up between us and the community. As, as I have often said, it is the community that, that supports us financially. And I would like us to support each other. Thank you.
Mrs. Retner, I just wanted to ask one more question. I'm sorry, this is very quick. I think you had mentioned in the, the notes from the meeting with Senator Greenstein that she had said that they were not moving forward currently with anything regarding full-day kindergarten. That was May 6th, right? That was Friday, May 6th. So I actually had, had researches right before the meeting and I just pulled it, I had pulled it up just now. Because on May 9th, there was an introduction to the Senate with the Bill S244 for requiring full-day kindergarten in all school districts and establishing a uniform age requirement for enrollment in kindergarten. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know whether or not, obviously it still has to go through various, you know, committees perhaps and a vote, but it just did seem odd that they would have said that, you know, maybe not knowing it. And then here it was introduced on Monday, taking the next steps towards that. So it's just something I wanted to mention because I had seen it, that it was on May 9th that it was introduced.
Sure, no, absolutely. And we brought that up to them and that was their response to us.
Yeah, and just for the information.
Report back what they said to us.
Right, right. And I'm not saying that you're giving us the wrong information. I mean, I can tell you the sponsors are Shirley Turner and Troy Singleton. So it is always possible that Senator Greenstein just was not aware. So I'm certainly not putting her at fault for this either. I just did want to mention it because it, you know, reminded me of what I had seen.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we will, where are we? A public forum. We will go move to our public forum. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Nancy Schaefer, First Avenue. There's a correction, it's Nina Green that's retiring, not Nina Green. Interesting. Thank you.
Hi, Rochnie Shaw, 10 Fieldview Drive. Good evening. I have a child in third grade at the Oak Tree School. I would like to bring to your attention the lack of school-wide community events sponsored by the Oak Tree Applegarth PTA. Since October, we have only had a trunk or treat at the school where the children could socialize with their friends and interact outside of school hours. In addition to this, there's also been a serious lack of communication and inclusion. To give some background, there has only been one general meeting held via Zoom at the beginning of the year. We are now approaching June. This meeting was listed at the very bottom of the website. Not a single email went out, nor was there a post on the PTA's Facebook page. Personally, I think the placement on, on the bottom of the website was intentional so there would be minimal participation and input from fellow PTA members. Many Oak Tree children are on sports teams with other children who go to Mill Lake, Woodland, and Barclaybrook Brookside. These children are always talking about all the amazing events that take place in their schools. They have fundraiser after fundraiser, daddy-daughter dances, ice skating parties, and the list goes on. Mill Lake, Woodland, and Barclaybrook Brookside PTs also announced their trunk or treat at the very beginning of the year. The Oak Tree Applegarth PTA announced a trunk or treat five days before the event, which left parents scrambling and basically to purchase items to decorate their cars. There are no monthly meetings, there's no calendar of events published, probably because there are no events to publish. And I find myself constantly thinking, these children deserve more. The PTA should be a platform for bringing students, parents, and teachers together. There are many parents who want to be involved but are not communicated to even when they sign up for committees or express interest. I personally reached out to help for back-to-school night and the trunk or treat and was told all volunteer spots are filled. Why? Anyone who wants to volunteer should be able to. I also reached out about organizing a Diwali activity and was told we could not do so because it was a religious event. I do understand that. But there are so many ways to celebrate Diwali without bringing the religion aspect into it. Many times, community members come to the microphone and compare ourselves to other districts. They have the right to do so. But it is important to know that within this district, there is a huge disparity between the Oak Tree Applegarth PTA and the PTA for Barclaybrook Brookside and Woodland Mill Lake. And I commend their executive boards for doing so much for the children. Finally, I want to express how happy I am with the education my child is receiving at Oak Tree. The teachers and staff are beyond amazing, but the children need more than just a good education. They need to feel a sense of community inside and outside of a regular school day. I really hope the board and administration can look into this and help foster an inclusive environment and improve community, oh, sorry, and improve communication and activity. The parents want to be involved and the kids deserve more. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw, thank you very much. What I will do is to show the respect and courtesy to both the principals of both Oak Tree as well as Applegarth. I will have a conversation with both of them and have that conversation about making sure that the appropriateness is of postings and doing everything. And I do agree that there should be consistency because I do know that they meet weekly because they have what's called a PLC, a Professional Learning Community, where all of the principals meet weekly to discuss events, activities, curriculum, and so forth, to make sure that there is as much parity as possible across the three different, I'll call them three schools, three, six, but three different schools. So I thank you for bringing this to my attention and I will, I will be happy to look into this matter.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. The first thing is, there was discussion about the meeting with the senator and the schools, and, and we learned that going to the state to build a school, if things fail, you know, is not a viable option because it takes so long. So I'm wondering, when this was discussed, I believe, I can't remember the, the month, but it was in the BGT Committee, it was discussed about this being a state plan, not a state model, not necessarily in a bad way, but then the acting superintendent made a comment that should this referendum fail, we can go right back out in September and put the same referendum on the ballot. So I'm confused in why that would be the avenue you would take. If the community votes it down the first time, why would you put the same plan again the next time, you know, a couple of months later? So maybe we could get some color on that. The second thing is, at the last special meeting, there was a business administrator that was acting that was voted on. I'm wondering why they're not here tonight? So maybe there could be some color on that. And then I'll go back to my first discussion this evening, and I'm glad members of this board admitted of their behaviors in the public and used the excuse that it made sense to go after a parent to potentially clear up any misinformation about the acting superintendent. If board members go out, no matter on what Facebook page, and are protecting the acting superintendent, or what they perceive as protecting the acting superintendent, and behave in the way that they did this past weekend, I will state it again, I don't see how your Board of Education badge comes off. And it is, in factually, a lie that a parent's name was not named because you did. And if your kid came home and said, "Mommy, my friend said, 'We're a terroristic family. We are anti-Semitic. We are bad because we are Islamic or we are Muslim.'" It is sick! And I am a white man, which many people would say is privileged, because we don't go through racism like some others do. But to imagine that any one of our kids could be in a position where if you don't like what we say at this mic, you label us as terrorists, anti-Semitic, where will it stop? Could you imagine your kid coming home and saying, "Mommy, I heard this about you. Are we a family of terrorists?" And don't say you didn't name a name because you did, and I will send this whole board tonight your posts. I want assurances from this board that you will not continue to harm families in this district, whether we come up here, any of us, white, black, purple, green, of any religion, stating that we don't agree with some of the policies being made. It is very sad.
And again, I would like to make this statement that nobody on this board targeted a family or made any comments to that nature.
George Jonkelman, 5 Kelly Court. Couple of rather petty things, probably. I see there's a meeting on the 19th. That'll be, what, the third meeting this month? I guess, maybe there's some structural deadlines that trigger this, but there's been no information given this evening as to what it is. I have a conflict that night with another meeting, and I would like to know what's going to happen, and so I can make an informed decision as to which one I skip. The other thing I'd like to request is, I appreciate that most, if not all of you, are very familiar with all the material covered, but the use of acronyms is, kind of loses almost everything for a lot of us. I have to ask around my people sitting near me, "What is that?" And when most of them don't know, then the information you're giving us is not known. So, give us a little guideline or stop using them, because we're not getting full and complete information when we're dazzled by items. I don't know what an SEC is. I didn't know what an SGI was, and I still don't know what NJPSA is. But, you know, and that's just three out of dozens this evening. Give us a break. Help us out with that. Either give us a list of what they mean or stop using them if, if possible. The other thing I'd like to ask the board to consider looking into, tenure, in my experience, in my information, was rarely meant in academic situations to protect people for reasons of diversity, so that you wouldn't get a department head who would throw out the people that didn't believe in him. It typically, historically, was not used to protect people and their careers indefinitely. That was not the meaning of tenure. And tenure was almost never meant for people in administrative positions or support positions. But the, here, it has come to be that, and since some of it has, has created problems in how we handle personnel situations, because of that extension of tenure to positions that classically weren't meant to be used that way, we might want to review that. Now, if it's something that's dictated by state or larger organizations, and, and I appreciate some of them probably are, but some of them may be our own policies, and maybe we want to review them if that would help us from having complications when we try to make decisions on how we're going to manage personnel. That's all I have. Thank you. Good meeting.
Thank you. And just to answer your first question about the meeting on May 19th, there was a special announcement on that. The purpose of that meeting is for the superintendent's search. You're welcome.
Can I tell people we're going to probably go to closed session by the way? Once again, I'm Doug Poey, Fort Tamarack Road. Referring to, many of my remarks are going to refer to your meeting of April 25th. Your attorney at that time did say that the, when the issue about the Booster Club funds was raised, he did say that the more than $1,900 could be returned to the Booster Club by a resolution of this board. No resolution was forthcoming at that time. I do want to state, though, that this was not a game, an athletic game between opposing high schools, where the gate receipts understandably go to the Board of Education that's hosting the game. This was a fundraiser.
No, Mr. Poey, it was a, it was a sanctioned NJ-
Stop the clock, please.
It was a sanctioned basketball game throughout the day.
Well, we have different perspectives on that.
It was a, it was a sanctioned NJ-SIA varsity and junior varsity basketball games that were played throughout the time.
All right, then. If, if that's the case, then I will, I will rephrase that, but I still believe that if the Booster Club was in some way running this, then consideration should be given to that since the board attorney had said that such was possible. The, the issue of your Director of Security, Item H, which you discussed at length this evening, it did suddenly pop up on the agenda, and Mrs. Chanley did explain why that was necessary, but there's an interesting history here. You transferred the Director of Security from the Business Administrator to the Superintendent's Office, direct line of authority. Now you are essentially proposing to eliminate that position, creating a second position, which the attorney said could easily be modified in terms of a job description. So to me, you're just pretending to do something when the real objective is to fire Mr. Piero. Mr. Piero's been here a long time. He was an officer in the Monroe Police. I think Mr. Piero has a very good relationship with students and therefore is a very good Director of Security. There were two things that I really regretted seeing, well, actually, three things. The President of this board made a remark to Mrs. Fabiano, and I'm not saying this, Mrs. Fabiano, in any way to embarrass you, but I've, about sharing confidential board information. I thought that comment was completely inappropriate, even if she had. That is not something that should have been stated in a public board meeting. That showed no respect whatsoever for a fellow member of the board. Your Vice President stated that she had, she had shared that confidential information with a member of the public who is not on this board. Her action is a violation of the Code of Ethics. Yet, you totally ignored it. There was no comment made about it, no mention whatsoever of an investigation. And speaking of investigations, I've heard that one of the reasons Mr. Gorski is suspended is that you want to conduct an investigation. Well, is that investigation being done? Has it started? You extended his suspension for some reason. The attorney stated that he had been working with Mr. Gorski to reword the resolution of your organizational meeting about bill payments. I really don't understand what this suspension was all about. How long is it going to last? What is the point of it? And finally, when you cut off Mr. Gorski in that April 25th meeting, as he was attempting to respond to comments from the public, showed a lack of respect to the man and to his position. And I would like for, I know my time is up, but I would like for this leadership to show more respect to your fellow board members as well as to the people that sit at the table with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poey. And just to reiterate, obviously, we cannot discuss personnel information, you should know that as a former board president. However, your statements are not correct. There is no, no intention on firing anybody this evening. So, again, as we've said, people come up to this podium and use it to spread disinformation to create a divide in our community, and that is what we need to stop. There are, these are personnel matters, and unfortunately, we cannot explain them to you, and you, and you know the reasons why, but to make false accusations against this board and these board members is not fair to us.
Sarah Aziz, 3 Longshot Drive. First, I would like to congratulate Acting Middle School Principal James Higgins on achieving his doctorate. I recognize the level of hard work and dedication and intellectual talent it requires to achieve a doctorate. I'm glad that we have administrators of such academic and professional distinction. I also want to give a special shout-out to my fellow Jamesburg graduate from MTHS, Thomas Emmons. He was among only 100 students nationwide that won a scholarship for community college transfer students that will allow him to attend Princeton University next year. Tom, I just want to say that you make us proud and underscore what an asset our Jamesburg students are to our high school. Congratulations. Now, on a more somber note, I want to express my concerns about the ethics of this school board. Per Item C of the May 5th, 20, May 5th BOE Agenda, there is a representation that there were interviews of possible candidates for the position of Acting Business Administrator, and that the Acting Superintendent believed that Ms. Laura Allen is the most qualified candidate for the position of Acting School Business Administrator, quote-unquote, "following interviews of the candidates for the Acting School Business Administrator position." There is no evidence that any interviews were conducted, as there was no job posting internally or externally. It should be noted that the current Business Administrator Board Secretary was removed from his position on April 27th, and the following week, on May 5th, Laura Allen was installed as Acting School Business Administrator. There's no information as to whether she accepted this position. Also, the Agenda does not list a new salary for Mrs. Allen. This leads to an appearance of a witch hunt against Mr. Gorski and a purge from the top down that began with Dory Albott, followed by Michael Gorski, and now Pete Piero. This unfortunately is just the beginning. Everybody should be concerned, teachers, staff, and the public, regardless of tenure status. The board appears to be interesting, interested in punishing honest, hard-working, and qualified school district employees while it refuses to hold the Acting Superintendent accountable for anything. At the last board meeting, I called on the board to conduct a forensic investigation into over $30,000 in tuition reimbursements made to Ms. Chanley over 20 years to attend doctoral programs at three different universities, and the board took no action. In early March, I requested records of all tuition reimbursement payments, and now it's May, and I'm still missing over three years of payment records. Where are those missing records? Where is the transparency? In February 2022, when I confronted Ms. Chanley about the fact that she misrepresented herself as a doctor in yearbooks for five years, instead of accepting responsibility for this error, Ms. Chanley attacked Rowan University, accusing them of libel and a lack of ethics. Can Ms. Chanley explain why she would attack such a reputable university and accuse them of libel? What kind of message does that send to our high school seniors who are thinking about applying to Rowan? Did Rowan University charge her with some kind of wrongdoing? Why would she accuse Rowan of lacking ethics? Why wasn't her dissertation topic approved, and why hasn't she resolved the issue over the past 14 years? Why has she registered for Rowan's commencement for six different prior years when she wasn't going to be awarded a degree in any of those years? She has registered for Rowan's commencement again this year, and the graduation date for EDD students is tomorrow, May 12th. Will Ms. Chanley be graduating from their doctoral program tomorrow? Why can't Monroe taxpayers get answers to these basic questions when they're funding her doctoral studies? And why should they be subject to personal attacks for asking these basic questions?
Thank you for your time. And with that, I'd like to say that this is why we have so much divisiveness in our community and what we have going on, because we have misinformation and lies and false accusations, month after month, with no basis, coming here to our podium, trying to create diversion, trying to create divisiveness. What we had this evening at the beginning of the meeting was a beautiful tribute to our teachers and our staff. We had our students cooking and serving food, performing for us. We celebrated our students representing us with Special Olympics. That is what this community in this school district is about, the children. This repetitive abuse and attack and harassment needs to stop, because until it does, you're going to continue to create divisiveness in this community that we cannot take. Our students do not deserve this. Our district does not deserve this. Mrs. Chanley does not deserve this, and it really needs to end. Seeing no one else for public forum, we will close that and move on to our closed session. Be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4 through 6, through, through 10:4 through 21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying, appeal, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, personnel matters, and matters covered by attorney-client privilege. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ready? All right, we're going to come back into the public session. We have a few resolutions to read. Okay, I'll go on the first one. Be it resolved that following an appeal by the parent, the administration's findings that case number 230585 committed an act of HIB hereby is affirmed. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and there's no discussion, so could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiana?
Yes.
Ms. Stravatsky?
Abstain because it wasn't the high school, or recuse.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
No.
And Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we have- Okay, we have our other resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Nancy Tagliafara as Acting Board Secretary effective immediately through a date to be determined at the rate of two hundred and seventy-five dollars per board meeting.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I know it's late, I was going to say, who's that?
Don't do it.
Michelle, did you have a?
No.
Oh, okay. Can we please get a roll call? Ms. Doretsky?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Happily, yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, and we have one more. Mr. Bausch is going to read that one for us.
Uh, yeah, we had, uh, agenda item H, which was the resolution regarding the Director of Security. That was deleted from the prior omnibus motion to be taken up later in the meeting, which is now. So, uh, the resolution is set forth in the agenda, I don't think we need to read it, but I would need a motion to approve agenda item H at the recommendation of the Acting Superintendent.
Can I just make a-
So move.
I was going to say, point of inquiry, just because I see there's public-
Second. I second it. Now you can go ahead.
I apologize, I just want, I think it's called point of inquiry, I could be wrong, I don't have my book.
Point of order.
Point of order, there you go. Um, with the public forum, with, for closed session items, and I should have asked this before the other two resolutions, I just saw it, is that supposed to take place after our discussions or beforehand?
Now, when you say that, what do you, public?
The, it's, item sixteen is public forum, closed session items only, and item H was moved to after closed session, I just wasn't sure where it lines up, that's all.
Right, since the prior motion was to delete the agenda item from, um, the prior omnibus motion to be taken up later in the meeting, this is the portion of the meeting where it, it goes, and we don't need a formal motion to put it in order. The Chair has the right, as Presiding Officer, to determine where things fall on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any comments? No, okay, can we get a roll call? Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Doretsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Fabiano?
Abstain.
Ms. Bora?
Abstain.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, do we have a closed session on there? I mean, a more public forum?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Okay, um, anybody wishing to speak at public forum? Seeing none, we'll pull this public forum, and our next Board of Education meeting is on May nineteenth. Thank you, have a good night. A meeting adjourned.